We're gonna come to order. All right, so we're gonna come to order. We've got some new people here. Laurie, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Supervisor Long. Commissioner Onstad. Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Supervisor Parks. Commissioner Duquesne. Supervisor Foy. Commissioner Kestley.
Wonderful. Welcome, everybody. I don't know when the last time we've done this, but this is...
We need a photo.
I know. This is pretty good. This is pretty cool. Love it.
We should have brought cookies for everybody.
Yeah, that would be... There you... Oh, she read our minds. There we go.
We do have a lot of cookies.
Where's the cookie?
All right. So, we have everybody here, CEOs here. I know that he has to leave right away because he's got a call coming pretty quick, but he may not be with us the whole time. But thank you, everybody, for coming. We look forward to this opportunity. And we'll leave it up to you guys. Ready to go?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Chair Foy, members of the board, Planning Commission, and Mr. Powers. My name is Shelley Sussman. I'm a planner in the Planning Division, and I'm one of three staff members working on the general plan update. Here with me today are Susan Curtis, the GPU Project Manager, and Clay Downing. And we're joined by Rick Rust, our new Project Manager from Mintier Harnish, replacing Bob Lago Mercino. Jim Harnish apologizes for not being here today. He had a family emergency. I will begin today's presentation with a review of staff's recommended actions and a summary of our most recent public outreach activities. Susan will follow and present some highlights from our Spanish Mixteco workshop, and then review the recommended action related to the Vision and Guiding Principles, and then hand the presentation over to Rick. There are eight actions staff is recommending as part of today's work session. The first is a recommendation for your board to approve the Vision Statement and Guiding Principles for incorporation into the 2040 General Plan. The other actions request input and direction from the Planning Commission and the board related to analysis methodologies, growth projections, evaluation criteria, and policy topics that are summarized in both the draft background report and the Alternatives Concept Finally, staff is requesting that the Board of Supervisors direct us to prepare the Alternatives Report based on the input and direction provided today. Because the format of this meeting is unique, we thought it would be helpful to specify that we plan to run through the entire presentation first. We then anticipate that you'll open things up for public comments, and once the public has been heard, we'll put the recommended actions back up on the screen and take them one by one. Although we invite both bodies to participate in that process, only the Board of Supervisors will be asked to vote.
Is that really just telling us to shut up and don't ask any questions? Okay, I understand that.
No comment.
You're up here long enough. You get the humor.
I want to briefly review the phases and milestones for the General Plan Update Project. Shown here is the overall schedule. Staff initiated the project in late 2015, and we expect to complete the project in the spring of 2020.
I gotta say something. Told you I couldn't interrupt. No. Just for the public out there that we're gonna have three minutes on publics so they can prepare their comments for three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. The project has seven phases. We're in Phase Four, which focuses on the development and evaluation of land use and policy alternatives. This slide shows how all of the project reports fit together and inform one another. The first major report to be completed for the project was the Assets Issues and Opportunities Report, which was completed as part of Phase Two. That, in turn, informed the development of the opinion survey and poll that we took last year, which was then used to draft the Vision and Guiding Principles and so on. Today, as I mentioned, we're requesting that your board approve the Vision and Guiding Principles for inclusion into the general plan, and we're asking for your input and direction on the Alternatives Concepts Report. These documents will then be used as the basis for moving forward through the project. The General Plan Update Team recently completed a series of outreach meetings that were held over the course of the last month. During that time, we conducted six open houses at various locations throughout the county. This map... It's a little blurry, it looks like. This map, though, shows the general locations around the county where the open house participants live, and it gives us an idea of how much coverage we got with the open house locations that we selected. As you might be aware, we try to choose different locations for all of our outreach events as we've gone through the process, just to get as much coverage throughout the county as we can. The open house venues that were selected for this round included the Port Huinimi Community Center, the Thousand Oaks Library, the Ventura County Museum of Agriculture in Santa Paula, the Oakview Community Center, the Mount Pinos Ranger Station in Fraser Park, and the Roger Jones Community Center in El Rio. We also held focus group meetings for all seven of our focus groups at the Government Center. We held those meetings back-to-back on March 19th and 20th. These meetings were open to the public, and we had robust participation from lots of public members, which accounts for the 174 participants at those focus group meetings. As is typical, we send emails to members on our Interested Parties list, and by now there are over 1,000 people on that list. We prepared several English and Spanish press releases and sent them to various venues. And in fact, all of the material that we prepare for our outreach events is always in English and Spanish. I'll summarize what we heard from the focus groups first. As a reminder, there are seven focus groups: housing, climate change, water, economic development, agriculture, open space and recreation, and transportation and infrastructure. In addition to the presentations and discussions that were held at each of the focus group meetings, we conducted a couple of exercises. And one of the exercises was to introduce the breadth of criteria that could be considered as we develop land use alternatives for the general plan. Staff identified a list of 26 evaluation criteria, and we asked participants to vote for their top 12, those they believed were the most important. And this graphic identifies those top 12 criteria selected by all of the focus group participants who chose to fill out the form. So you can see number one and two, water and housing, two of the issues that come up regularly. Focus group participants, which include, as I mentioned, not only focus group members, but members of the public who were present, had the opportunity to consider land uses in their own communities. We asked people what types of land uses are needed where they live. Land use types included single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, commercial, industrial, mixed-use, and park and recreation facilities. As the form shows, people could choose from critical need, need, limited need, don't need more, or not sure. And as you can see, the land uses that were identified by focus group participants as critically needed or needed are multifamily residential topped the list, followed by mixed-use development, and so on down the line. And I want to mention there's additional focus group input related to policy options that Rick will cover later in the presentation. We conducted very similar exercises at our open houses, and this slide identifies the top 12 criteria selected by all of those participants.
Could I ask a question on this one?
Sure.
I know you... I'm gonna try to keep... But I went through that whole list, and in no place does it say promote open space, which seems like sort of a real overarching thing here in Ventura County. But the choice of, you know, it's protect scenic resources, protect... They parcelled it out, but there's no one thing that says... Was there a reason for that, or reason... You know, why that wasn't a choice, I guess, for participants?
I know one of the challenges we've had when we've talked to the community about open spaces, what use do people assume open spaces includes? So for some people, open space means recreation, and there are recreation questions included. For some people, open space means agriculture, and there are agriculture questions, and so on. So there isn't a single use associated with the open space, so...
I agree, but for a lot of people, it's all of those things. It's, you know, it's this... Everybody has a pretty general concept of it's non-developed land, parks, agriculture, land that is grazing land, all of that falls into that category. So... But if you parcel it down, and you say parks, and then you say promote agriculture, then what you do is you actually break the voting for open space down into subcategories. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I will say, too, that the board will have an option to identify the top criteria that they feel should be evaluated or used to evaluate land use alternatives, and so perhaps that issue can be addressed at that point. Again, as with the focus groups, we asked the open house participants to consider land uses in their own communities, but you can see this form is a little bit different. We wanted the information from the open houses to be more location-specific because we wanted to see if we could identify links between land use needs that were identified in particular communities. So... Is this the pointer? No. So you'll see, you know, we use different worksheets for different open houses, and we also identified specific communities so that we tried to identify, you know, whether there were links between specific communities and land use needs identified. And this is what we found. And you'll see this table looks a little bit different than the table created for the focus groups. What this graphic shows is the average percentage across all open house respondents for a given land use category, followed by the percentage of open house locations that registered at least a 5% increase in responses for that land use category. So, for example, overall, 5% of the open house respondents said that industrial uses were either critically needed or needed, but 12% of the respondents in Thousand Oaks, at the Thousand Oaks Open House, felt that way. Here are the results for those who answered that no more of a particular land use was needed. And the uses with the largest differences are mixed-use development, 14% overall, with El Rio, you know, basically doubling that, and the parks and recreation facilities, 9% of open house respondents said we don't need any more, with Santa Paula coming in at 20%.
Can I confirm something? So this is, if you see Thousand Oaks, that means the Thousand Oaks Open House results, not the city of Thousand Oaks.
Correct.
I just want to make sure everyone is clear on that.
Right. And in the packets are the actual forms that people filled out, so if you wanted to go back and find out exactly which communities identified, which land uses, that data is there in your packet.
Could you let us know how many people attended these? I was looking at the one, for example, in my city, I think it was 14 people, at least in the packet one that we received.
Right.
So do you have, like, the number of people?
I don't have those numbers.
The percentages appear, but it's...
I know it's in our materials somewhere.
Okay.
We can gather that for you. And I mean, this is just a brief snapshot of what we heard at all of these 13 outreach events. And as I've said, your staff report packages contain a lot of additional information about each individual meeting and the comments we received. So that wraps up the summary for me. Susan is now going to provide some additional details on the Spanish and Mixteco workshop.
Good afternoon. Chair Foy, members of the board and members of the commission, thank you for having us here today. I just wanted to give a highlight on a workshop that we were fortunate enough to partner with Supervisor Zaragoza to host. As you know, we've done all of our materials in Spanish and English, and Clay and I both speak Spanish. We're available for participants to interact with. We've had translation services available at our workshops, but we decided with the help of Mr. Zaragoza that we would actually do a Spanish-language workshop with our presentation in Spanish, all staff in Spanish, Mixteco translation, and then we actually had English translation as well. So we hosted...
And Supervisor Parks, we had in and out over 50-plus people participate there, just for information.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was our highest-attended workshop. Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. And, you know, that's what we could count, was our 48, but, you know, people were milling in and out throughout different times. Really enthusiastic, positive crowd. They had a lot to share. We had them share during question-and-answer period. We also had various activities with comment cards and posters. Again, they also gave us their priority rankings on some criteria, and the evaluation criteria. And we asked them, and I'll show a map, to identify where they thought growth should be, particularly if they were farmworkers, and where we should maybe place some farmworker housing. But I wanted to take this opportunity to really share some of the voices we heard that night, because I think it's some voices we haven't heard. So some of the things that we heard, and I'd like to share those with you in Spanish and give you the Spanish translations, you know, as we were talking about future growth and growing from 2020 to 2040, one gentleman got up and very passionately, you know, he shared all of his concerns, and he said, "No necesitamos ayuda ya," or "Ayuda en el futuro." "Los necesitamos ayuda na' ya." I just like "ya." So we don't need help in the future. We need it now. And many of them had concerns that were related to the now of the general plan. They were related to the parking and the overcrowding in the houses, and two and three families that had to live together because they couldn't afford housing, and all of the external factors that are related to that densification and overcrowding. I also wanted to share some of the other criteria that they asked us to look at and other priorities that they asked us to share with you. And we assured them we would share those things with you. Supervisor Zaragoza said to the crowd, "No tenemos ayuda," or "No tenemos miedo." "Don't have fear. You can share with us." And so we made a commitment to them. We're gonna go back to the MAC and report the results of their outreach with us. But some of the other things they said to us that they wanted you to consider was: "Aumento de parca y facilidades de recreación para juventud." "Increase park and recreation facilities for youth." "Ayudar los vagabundos y personas desfavorecidas." That's a hard one. "Help homeless and disadvantaged people." "Vivienda digna para trabajadores del campo." "Decent housing for farmworkers." "Viviendas para personas de bajos ingresos." "Housing for low-income people." "Respeto y dignidad." "Respect and dignity." At the end of the workshop...
Can I share something there?
Yes, sir.
Once I told them not to be afraid to speak, you know, that we needed their input, we couldn't stop them.
No. They actually stayed till well after eight. That's true.
Susan did a really, really good... Your Spanish was much better than that, no, so...
Yeah, I know. I'm nervous right now.
No, but I understand, but I just want to assure that they really participated. And I told them, "This is your opportunity. Don't be afraid. Let us know." You know, so that way we can take that to the board and also to the Planning Commission. I just wanted to assure them. My apologies for interrupting.
Yeah, we did. No, not all. And we were, you know, we're fortunate enough in RMA, we have several bilingual planners as well as staff, so all of our stations were hosted by those staff. And they all really enjoyed the experience, indicated they'd be willing to volunteer again for future workshops. But again, we just wanted to give you a little snapshot of the feedback we got and the success we felt we got in transferring that information to you, which is in your packets in both Spanish and English. And now I will turn over the presentation to...
I do have another map.
Oh, I do have another map. I'm sorry. Forgot about my map. Wrong way. So the last map we did, because we knew we were having the MYCOP, who works with a lot of Mixteco farmworkers, brought Mixteco speakers, and we had translation services. So we did ask people, "Where do you think we should grow in the county?" And in particular, we said, "If you do work in the farming industry, let us know where you think farmworker housing might be appropriate." So they marked on a map some of the areas they think would be areas that they would like to see farmworker housing, so we just thought that would be a good item for us to reference as we move forward if we do, you know, look at, you know, potential farmworker areas, especially in relation to our implementation program for the housing element. But that's an exercise we did because we did capture some new participants that we hadn't necessarily heard from in the past.
Susan, let me share some... I'm sorry, apologize to the commission and the board supervisors. We had one individual who was really concerned about the placement of farmworkers. One individual out of the whole 50, but the people that participated were really giving us some good input, you know, the farmworkers themselves. So that was really important for us to... They wanted to find out access, how close to the freeway, how close to, you know, to transportation and so forth. So they gave us some really good input, Susan, that I think the board and the planning commissions, you know. I wanted to share that information.
Yeah, and one farmworker said to us, "Más trabajadores para los ranchos. Lo están matando." "More workers for the ranches. It's killing them." So we got some really good feedback from the farmworkers, and they were really open to sharing with us their experiences. So we've got some good partnerships now with CAZ and MYCOP and LULAC, so we're excited to move forward with sharing their feedback moving forward in the next two years. Thank you. Now I'll turn this over to Rick. Oops. I should keep going backward on that. So the top goes forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, the rest of the board, and the Planning Commission. I'm glad to be here today to talk to you about the Alternatives Concept Report. I'm Rick Rust with Mintier Harnish. I'm the project manager that will be taking over the completion of the document. I've presented to you before in another context where I was a project manager for the Naval Base Ventura County Joint Land Use Study.
Did a great job.
Also have done the... was the lead planner on the City of Oxnard's General Plan Update a little bit over a decade ago. So from there, the area and the ability to get the plan done on the target line that you're talking about for the dates. We do have on your item here a relook at Vision and Guiding Principles. Now, for the board, you may say, "Haven't we looked at this before?" And what we're looking for is just for your final blessing of the list. You made a number of comments at your meeting on January 23rd, and we want to make sure that those were reflected correctly and incorporated into the document. As I mentioned, I'm gonna be throwing out a whole presentation. Feel free to interrupt at any time you'd like to have some further clarification, but as we said, we'll take the actions on all these items after you've had the public comments. But basically, this is reflective of what you gave on the January 23rd meeting set. Alternatives Concept Report. Why are we doing an Alternatives Concept Report or an Alternative Report itself? The Alternatives Report itself is very important because a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive update of a general plan is a broad look, a lot of changes, a lot of moving parts. It affects almost everything that you do as far as land use and resource planning within the county. So it's a very important thing to get right, and by the time we get to our draft general plan, we're also looking at doing a SEQA evaluation, and so we want to make sure that we have satisfied all of your concerns and issues and things that you would like to have evaluated and included in that general plan. So when we've done these, it's very... It is normal for us to do an Alternatives Report, to be able to look at the range of things that need to be addressed. Now, alternatives are kind of two things. Many people think of alternatives as being the land use map. What color is the property on the corner? Is it gonna be red? Is it gonna be yellow? That is part of it. That's an important part of it, for sure. But another part of it is the actual policy language. And in fact, most of what you do in the future, making resource decisions, will be coming out of that policy direction. So we want to make sure that we give you a good idea of what choices may be made. Now, we're doing a little extra step at this point, I guess, at the Alternatives Concept Report. We don't normally go through creating a separate report to ask about your opinion, but because we don't want to go the wrong direction, because we think there's a lot of critical things to get feedback from the Planning Commission and the board, we wanted to make sure that we were on the right track. And so today, we're going to be talking about what is going to be included in the Alternatives Report and how we're going to go about doing it, so that when we bring it back to you, it'll be on target. The idea for the Alternatives Report is to help you make an informed direction as to what should be in the general plan document. Now, as we look at the flow of developing alternatives, we're obviously now at the Alternatives Concept Report at the beginning here. We're gonna be moving into the Alternatives Report, and we're proposing to bring this in two pieces. Half of it will be coming forward for your July 31st workshop, and then another part with some of the policy and land use pieces coming back to you in the fall for your final direction. And with that, you'll be in the fall, you'll also be giving us your direction on what you consider to be your preferred alternative. That is, the direction that the overall general plan will be taking. And this will be the basis for the evaluation and the environmental impact report that goes along with this. So it'll be a very important meeting in that fall to wrap up that and to look at all these different alternatives, provide your choices as to what you would like us to go forward with as part of that. So the Alternatives Concept Report isn't a document that provides a lot of answers. There's not a solution for how to deal with homelessness. There's not a policy statement in here about how to deal with greenhouse gases. What we're looking at right now is pretty much an annotated outline. That is, what are we gonna do and go about as we create this Alternatives Report and make sure that we're on target and meeting your needs? Now, as part of that, and as part of the list of items we're looking for your recommendations on today or your guidance on today, there were eight items to go through. One was the Vision and Guiding Principles item. The rest will be numbered as we go through here, and some of them go from smaller items to bigger items, but they're all important as we go forward. One of them is dealing with the actual structure of the general plan document. Right now, you have your general plan organized in four thematic chapters, dealing with resources, hazards, land use, and public facilities and services. These address the seven state-mandated elements that go into that document, including... So it covers things such as housing, land use, circulation, conservation, open space, safety, and noise. So those are the seven items the state says you need to have as elements. And then recently, there's also been state law passed concerning adding an element dealing with environmental justice. Now, when the state says that you must include an element, it doesn't mean you have to have a separate chapter of the document called Element Noise. You can combine them. And your general plan was created in a thematic style, which was very popular back about 20 years ago, as far as an idea of how to bring disparate items that have relationships to each other and bring them to the forefront, so put the discussion in one place. That's recently come out of favor a little bit more as far as the organization, so we do want to look at how is the best way to organize this information. Importantly in all this is not only for your ease of use and reference, but for the public's access and ease of use as well. And then we're looking at also providing this in a web-based format. So how do we create a structure that makes more sense to access the information easily? If you've gone through your table of contents recently, you find it's a fairly voluminous list of topics, and so how do you find what you want? And so that's going to be what this part of the Alternatives Report looks at, is how do we make a document that's easy to access, provides the information that you need in a timely way, and is very clear in its intent and design for where it's going forward? So again, we're not looking for you to provide us guidance on exactly what the structure will be. At the end of the meeting today, we're gonna be looking for your nod that it's okay to evaluate looking at how to reorganize the document into the structure, which may be breaking out into separate elements instead of making it into a thematic construct that it is today, again, for its ease of use. As we go through the element structure, we'll also be looking at a range of items such as land use designations and how they're called out and used within the document, looking at the overall structure of area plans, how to make them more consistent, how to make them easier to use and more straightforward, how to make sure that they're in consistency with the policy guidance of the general plan. When all is said and done, the general plan's important because it's your foundation. It's the document that provides the foundational guidance for all the other planning that you do. So if you change your zoning code, your coastal plan, if you adopt a specific plan or master plan, these are all required to be consistent with the intent of the general plan, so it's very important that we get the right description, and that we make sure that the area plans are fully consistent with the overall guidance, and that we provide a good framework for how future updates to area plans in the future might be done. Satacui just had their plan updated. Many others are back from much further back in time, but it provides a different structure and a different approach, and we want to make sure we can formalize that as far as a direction forward. Land use designations are also required by state law to provide good guidance on the density and intensity, or the use of the property in the different designations. And for many cases, the broad designations that are used by the county, community, rural, agricultural, et cetera, don't provide a lot of discriminatory guidance as far as what's allowed. You rely on your zoning document to do that for you. We want to look at the possibility of breaking those guidances down a little further to make sure they're providing better guidance. make sure they're providing better guidance as far as the density that you're expecting, the intensity that you're looking for with commercial and industrial uses to provide And importantly, we've got some new topics. Since you've last done your general plan update, the state legislature has given you several new tasks. And some of these deal with items such as the new environmental justice item, dealing with climate adaptation and resiliency, looking at disadvantaged communities and ideas of environmental justice. There's a number of things that need to be addressed as we go forward, and we've got to make sure that your new general plan fully meets the intents and guidance of state law. That's been passed since your last update and is also in compliance with the new guidelines the state introduced last year for their general plan guidelines that were done by the governor's office of planning and research. So we'll make sure that you have a plan that's fully up to date with items that are currently required or ones that will be required the next few years. One of those is vehicle mile traveled and looking at that as far as a measurement for impacts in the future. It's not required today, but it will be in the next few years, and so we're going to future-proof you and make sure that you're ready to go on day one. I got ahead of my slide there, so we'll go to the next one. So that's the end of that particular topic. I'll take a breath in case there's any questions, but we could certainly catch them at the end.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Do, do all general plans have an alternate concept report, or is that something that's...
Not an alternatives concept report.
Alternative concept reports, not in, all general plans are not required to have an alternatives concept report, is that correct?
All, general plans aren't required to have an alternatives report for that matter. I mean, you could just let us loose and have our best shot based on what we've heard as putting together a general plan, but it's likely to be a little off-kilter for you.
Sure.
In all the plans that Mid-Tier Harnish has done, we have prepared an alternatives report. So for areas such as San Joaquin, for Merced, for San Benito, Madera, Fresno, we have prepared this alternatives report, which the politicians involved in those jurisdictions have found to be very useful, because it's a way for us to look at the big picture items that will shape your future and to get feedback early on, so that we come back with this large document, it's on target for you.
And did you do an alternatives concept report also, or just an alternatives report?
Just an alternatives report. The reason we're doing the alternatives concept report is because we felt it was, it was a good idea to come before you and just get your input on if we're going the right direction. It's just another touchstone as we go along the process to make sure we're in track.
So this, this idea of alternatives reports in general is, is something that's not completely unique to you, but that's your style in terms of doing general plans?
It's not unique to Mid-Tier Harnish either. Most general plans have an alternatives report as part of them.
Thank you.
Mr. Ayes?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted one question on the environmental justice. End of it over in the Madera and Fresno area had to do a lot with water, right, at the time? The environmental justice concerns?
There had, environmental justice wasn't a required component back at the time. Water certainly was an issue.
It's a big one there.
I know we did Tulare County, there was a number of rural communities that had significant water issues to address, both from overdraft issues and lack of groundwater for water supplies, as well as water quality issues.
So they were named DUCs, I think, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
DUCs, D-U-C-Ks, right?
DUCs, yeah.
DUCs, disadvantaged.
That was a term that wasn't used in those communities at the time.
It is now.
It is now, yes.
I think the commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. I had a question as it relates to the post-alternative and dealing with housing and things you're going to consider as things move forward legislatively possibly going to impact us here. There's a couple of issues that Sacramento's going right now, dealing specifically with affordable housing and density and rezoning or potential for rezoning property to accommodate the state's mandates, which are basically in arrears throughout the state. Is you, do you propose to include legislation that likely will impact us as relates to density and affordable housing requirements?
You have, there's a housing element update that's part of this overall program. You'll be getting new, what they call RENA numbers, or regional housing allocations, which will talk about the numbers that have been assigned to the county to meet in the future. Now, as part of this process, as part of the alternatives that I will talk about in a few minutes, is we're looking at projecting out what could be developed within the existing general plan, what are the types of densities that are likely or might look at changing. And we put on strong emphasis on looking at infill potential within both the existing communities and the area plans to make sure that we are fully addressing the potential of your built environment prior to looking at any of their options. But providing for and meeting that RENA number will be an important part of what we do. There's a number of housing needs within the county. We talked about farm worker housing a little bit ago, housing that's affordable to a working family, starter fam, starter homes for young adults that are coming into the community, and the desire to keep some of your children and grandchildren in the community, and how do you provide that kind of housing? That is something that definitely will be addressed as part of this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
A question, you don't, we're not required to do an alternative report, but we are required to do an alternatives analysis for an EIR?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to happen regardless?
Yes, you'll get into that. You won't have, CEQA won't care how you organize your document, we're talking about that today on this. But yes, you will be required as part of the CEQA document to look at a range of alternatives ranging from the no project alternative, which is basically keeping things the way they are, to the proposed alternative we have here. And some of the alternatives that we look at in the alternatives report will also become part of the information in the EIR.
Thank you. And while I have the mic, just, you did a great job with the joint land use study. I appreciate your work on that.
Thank you. We'll be putting that in this document, too.
Any other questions, comments? No? Okay.
Part of what we're doing, and this leads into what I just mentioned about the potential for infill. It's an important principle within the county to not just expand the urban footprints out into your important ag lands or to your important open space resource areas and your natural resource areas. So in doing that, what might be typical in many general plans is to look at what the vacant land is, start looking at greenfield development areas, and start projecting where the county might be able to meet its needs using those kinds of expansion techniques. What we're looking here is putting a lot of emphasis on identifying the potentials that are out there, and part of that is this development potential methodology. So the first step is looking at likely areas that have potential for development, that is, that aren't constrained or would limit their development. So we look at physical, regulatory, and infrastructure constraints. We look at items like physical constraints. We might be looking at things like slope, items that might be in flood zones, things that have some notable considerations as far as their development. Now, we're looking at the whole county and we're developing a broad model. I suppose somebody could say, well, we've cut off at 20% slope, and yes, you theoretically could build on a slope greater than 20%, but it's not a typical development parameter, it's not something we want to encourage, and it's something that's not that affordable for development. So we had to define a, a line that we considered to be a good line to look at overall. You could probably build something within a flood zone if you went through all the proper permits and procedures with the Corps of Engineers and others involved, but it's not really likely. So we have eliminated things that we feel are in that not really likely category. The things such as regulatory constraints, as we go forward and we look at items such as green areas and agricultural areas, the guidance that's provided within the county today about areas that should be developed in and areas that should not be developed within. Then for infrastructure, if you're going to build at certain densities, if you want to put an apartment building in, you're going to probably have to connect into sewer or to a community water system. So looking at those parameters when we look at different densities. If you're going to build a house on five, 10 acres, you can probably be on a septic and a well. But if you're going to build something more developed, you're going to have to be near some infrastructure. And so we look at that distance to infrastructure going forward. And then we also look at what the assessor denotes as vacant land. When their tax rolls, they try to go through and capture everything as far as what's vacant and what's not. We'll talk about how that is or isn't correct sometimes. What we're doing is we're going through and ground truthing this information, because a model can only go so far. So we've gone through, we've looked at the vacant land that's identified by the assessor. We've looked at how that land might be constrained by the three items that I talked about. Here's some area in Pyru, and it's the vacant lands. The brown is vacant residential, the red is vacant commercial, and the blue is vacant industrial. Now, we used the zoning designations in the county for this modeling, because the general plan designations, as I was alluding to before, are not refined enough to do a model. Some places, they say from zero to 28 units per acre. So we used the zoning to be able to narrow in better what the potential of that property County staff has fortunately taken out all the math that was in here before for the slide, but what we looked at was to try to identify front-utilized properties that are significantly different from their neighbors. And when I say neighbors, if you're designing a residential, what is the typical residential density within a given existing community or given area plan? So we limited it to the geography. So again, what are your neighbors doing, kind of thing? And then we looked at a deviation from that, and we set a parameter for how far you could be off of that before you were, probably had some space available. Again, we're looking at parcels that might be able to be split to put a second unit on the property, something beyond just the simple accessory dwelling units. So here's a closer look, and we're going to look up at that red square there. So for every one of these, we have to actually go through and evaluate the property. The brown areas are designated as vacant by the assessor's office. Now, you can see in the bottom top corner of the one, there is some kind of a structure there, but it does not look to be a significant structure. And then the yellow one shows potentially underutilized residential land. Now, when we're doing this evaluation, we have to go through each parcel by hand and evaluate it. This one popped up because it's about 30% wider than its neighbors, so significantly less density than those properties around it. But if you look at it, it's not likely that we're going to build another house in that property. This whole area is large lot, single-family residential. This is in keeping with that neighborhood, it's just a little bit bigger than its neighbors. It's the premium lot in the subdivision. So in this case, that yellow lot would go out of our analysis, and we'd probably keep the four brown lots as potential residential sites. Of course, this has the problem of how do you get a road to the back neighbors, but we'll deal with that as we go through them. So that's what we're doing for development capacity analysis. Again, the focus here is to go beyond what is typically done, looking at vacant land, and to evaluate what is our potential to infill and what might we need to do to encourage that infill to happen. Again, optimizing our land resources and providing a more consistent urban corridor and urban spaces and protecting our open spaces, our natural resources, and the open area agriculture that we value in the county. Questions on that? All right. Growth projections. This is probably the chicken and egg part of our conversation. That is, if somebody projects you being so big, should you provide the land use to grow to that size? There's always a need to look at some type of projection, instead of just what your current map shows you, to look at where you might be going. Now, what we're trying to do as part of the alternatives report is look at different sources of projections as we go forward and what those might tell us. This is a chart we've used in some of the focus groups in the open houses, talking about the range of housing. If you look at a historic population growth, the chart on the top, 829 people added per year, was looking at 1988 through 1998. So before we hit too many of the recessionary periods, before we had SOAR in place, it was less constrained as far as development going forward. The historic growth is there in the middle bar and is showing 484 people per year as being added on average. And then the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, projected about 580 people per year as a growth rate. Now, it's important to note that while you may not agree with SCAG exactly, SCAG is who provides your regional housing needs assessment number, or RENA numbers. That's going to be what the state will look to you for, for your housing element. So it's something that we want to look at as far as a range of options. Again, we'll be coming back to you with discussion about what that all means and what it might portend. But if you multiply those rates out for 20 years, this general plan is covering, this is showing us maybe adding up to 11,600 people. This is only the unincorporated portions of the county, and needing approximately 5670 as far as the number of housing units, if we look at about three persons per unit, which is the current average for the county. There's also projections about the jobs and employment that would come into the area, and looking at additional 3,000 jobs. And we'll also be evaluating the potential of commercial and industrial lands and their ability to support the additional job growth that would occur in the next 20 years.
Before you leave that slide, you said in the county, it's about three residents per, per unit. Do you have 5,670 additional residential units for 11,600 people, which is a lot less than three per unit?
That's actually the bottom range of that number. There's a higher range to that as well. The housing element actually looked, when they originally were doing this, they looked at a 2.19 multiplier, and then in looking at recently at the American Community Survey information from 2015, it's about 3.05 as far as the persons per unit. So we would suggest as part of the alternatives report that we look at that 3.05 as being the current standard.
So if we take 11,600 divided by the 3.05, we'd be more accurate in terms of the number of additional residential units that we have to, if we follow this scenario, right? Correct?
That would be the number we would use, yes.
I have another comment on this also. In the report, it states, I believe it's page 3-89, that based on population growth, the unincorporated area may need between 4,00732, the historical, and 5,0670 additional residential dwelling units. So if your goal is to be able to live within our means, taking, is there a reason why you're taking the highest number of the projection of between 4,000 and this 5,600?
Okay. Just checking my math. Okay. She was clarifying that that other number came from the background report. If you were to actually take the future population of 11,600 divided by three, then you end up at 3866. Now, back to your question about why did we pick this number? We're not necessarily picking a number, we're not trying to make sure we achieve a certain population growth. What we're trying to do in this is make sure that we have available adequate land that will support our future growth. And I want to make sure that we don't go maybe the wrong way with these numbers. If we come back here and say we need 3866 units, we're not going to propose an alternative that has exactly land enough for 3,866 units, because that doesn't provide any market choice, it doesn't provide any flexibility. We can't project exactly what every existing community or every area plan will pick up or lose, and so we have to provide some flexibility in the land use framework, because if you don't, then the overall problem is a simple supply and demand issue. And then if you don't have enough land available to build the housing, you will end up driving up the prices of that housing and confounding your affordable housing problem further.
So my thought is that you give a range in the report, both on housing units and on population, and you're taking the highest number in each of those. And I'm just saying that, to me, that biases it to the highest number when, you know, that whole concept of being able to grow within our means. So I'm, I'm more comfortable when you save somewhere between 4,700 and 5,600 than all of a sudden changing from the report where it says it will be between these two numbers to just going with the highest, because I don't, I, that concern for biasing for going to the most that we can do. And I don't know if that's the best way to plan. I think Ventura County's special because we've been able to really essentially steer growth to the cities. And when we start adding more than we need or going to the highest end for the unincorporated area, you know, again, we're talking about the competition then between agriculture lands that are important to us and the open space lands. So just throwing it out there, not that comfortable with going with the highest number when we go into these categories. Because my emphasis is actually, you know, steering growth to the cities and not into the unincorporated areas, which I think really should be our goal.
Yeah, I think the slide was originally modified to take out extra numbers, so it didn't make it confusing, just to give you the range of what we're looking up to. For the alternatives report, there will be For the alternatives report, there will be a chapter on population projections, which will show these two projections, as well as another one that Caltrans has developed, looking at overall needs. And for the alternatives report, while we're not picking it today, the alternatives report will lay out all the projections that we have, how we're able to distribute those to the communities in a best estimate sort of format. And then, yes, we will provide the context of land use alternatives against that range so that you can make that decision. So we're not asking you to decide today that you like the top end. That was just for the presentation of where it might be going, but appreciate the point, and we'll make sure that we give you back the range from the low to the high as far as potentials.
Excuse me. How hard and fast is this 5670 number from SCAG? What does that mean? Is that a target, or is that a number we have to hit?
It's a projection for what they think based on, so they take a bunch of demographers and put them in the dark room, and they all look at what the death rate is, the birth rate, the immigration, the ex-migration. They look at those balancing pieces, as well as the attraction that may be coming to the area for job hunts and those leaving because of the inability to find jobs or desire to move to a more affordable area, or whatever it might be. And so they put together this model that projects this not only for Ventura County, but for the other counties that are part of the SCAG region. In fact, this goes on throughout the state. In fact, the California Department of Finance also does a overall projection for Ventura County, of which the SCAG model is based off of to some extent. What this means is not that you're expected to meet this target if someday in the future SCAG is not going to come back and refuse to give you a grant because you didn't meet this overall population growth. But they will be projecting a regional housing needs number, and they'll contain very low and low income housing requirements based on this population growth. So what portion of this overall number will require housing that is more affordable than typically the market provides? And they'll be asking for the general plan to talk about how the county will assist in making that happen. So the number as it relates to those low and very low income numbers is important. The overall number as far as being able to match it, nobody's going to be judging you against that directly. It's just there for your information and determining where you might want to make changes in the future.
Yeah, but in the interim, we're charged with responsibility of getting to that number or close to that number. And based on the documents we receive, we'd have to rezone 2,200-plus acres of open space ag based on the current density to get there, when documents also provide that 90% of all the growth of jobs, people, et cetera, are going to be in the cities. So it just seems to me a difficult situation at best.
And the county is talking with SCAG about the distribution of numbers, and that has not been finalized at this time, so it is subject to some change. That will be towards the fall, I believe, that they'll have the final numbers.
Is this something we can negotiate?
So there may be some...
Is this subject to negotiation?
Yes.
To an extent, yes.
Is it?
Previously, VCOG is in charge of that, and then the City Managers Association got together, and some cities actually took a little bit more so that others, like the unincorporated county, didn't have to take as much. So it is subject to negotiation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I add, even the cities are having a hard time meeting that quota too, right? The cities are also having a hard time meeting...
Yes, and as housing elements go, HCD, or Housing and Community Development at the state level that evaluates all the housing elements, has often looked at communities and has given them their RENA numbers. They've come up with policies for how to meet it. The state is now very much interested in seeing how you're doing and why you haven't met those numbers. And so it's becoming more of a show-me kind of situation as the housing elements are going forward.
To justify that you have not met that...
Yeah, while at the same time, the county is not in the business of building houses.
That's true. And I think the supervisor mentioned that well, because we defer to the cities for building homes and so forth.
Right. And for most of the higher-density housing, the cities are the appropriate location, and so a lot of that need would probably be met in the communities as you had your principles.
Yep. Thank you.
For clarification for me, this number, this 5,600 number, is what you're projecting for the unincorporated areas of the county? And is that going to be accomplished and addressed during this process as to whether there's vacant land? Or are you going to rezone existing residential developments to be higher density? So possibly creating areas that are more congested than others have been?
We don't have the answer to that yet. That's what we're looking at right now. In some cases, I mean, the idea is to try to keep a compact form around the existing communities or within the area plans that you currently have, so you're not spreading out in the open space ag areas. And in doing that, why we're focusing on these larger pieces of underutilized properties. We also have to look at the context of where that change is. We can't just go into a single-family neighborhood and probably add in an apartment building on a small lot. That probably won't work either. So we have to look at what are the appropriate changes from a planning standpoint to best meet the needs of the county, to meet the needs of the residents in these areas, but still making sense with that overall way forward. So there's a lot of things to balance.
Can I ask you real quick? When you, going back to where you come up with this information that you're, you know, growth and all that, how dated is that information? And what I mean by that is, in the last two or three years, lots of changes going on that were different than if I was to use growth models that are 10 years ago, seven years ago. We know people are leaving California. We know those kind of models are changing. We know tax laws change, which is going to have different change. We also know that in land use areas, what are you using? We've got strip malls, shopping centers. I mean, you saw the LA Times that was talking about in five years, half the malls will be gone. Are we using that kind of land for housing? How are we doing that? Were we finding, as you talk about, you know, land that's already there being reused in areas where maybe you put an apartment building, you're not in residential areas? Are you using that updated-type information, or is it too new to even put that in your models?
The projection for what the population change would be, those are maintained fairly regularly. The state updates its estimates every year, and as was mentioned, SCAG is currently doing that work this month, I mean, going through the fall, to come up with a new number. So it's pretty fresh in that way.
Well, I know what the new number is, but I'm just talking about trends that change those numbers. That's fine. You know, people could say we, because I don't know when you tell us these trends that have happened. If you did this five years ago, and they said the trend in 2017, 16 was going to be this, did we meet that trend? And when 17 was going to be this, did we meet that trend? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, because I can say things are going to happen, but how do I know if they really did happen? Because that's going to be a long-term part of, because there's big decisions to be made here, and if things are going to be different, you're going to ask a lot of different type models, and I don't know.
And the thing you mentioned about the conversion of shopping centers and what America's going to do with all this space in the future is...
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know if you heard the news this morning. They talked about 30,000 to 70,000 retail places closing, and you're talking about Madison Avenue has this vacant spots now open. I mean, so there's a lot of different things that are chapp... I guess that's, because if you make decisions going forward without real understanding, because things are moving so fast, I'm just curious about how that goes. Linda, what, yeah, yeah, so...
I think the numbers we're using are as fresh as we can get them, but there are many things changing in our world right now that a lot of people haven't gotten a good handle on, how that's going to interplay with our world.
The way that SCAG was able to determine the number of the regional housing needs assessment, the RENA numbers, was they asked the cities, what does your general plan allow for? And they told them that's what they need to meet. And that's how they did it in the last cycle. So, you know, it's kind of a tail, dog chasing its tail type of thing, because when we give them the numbers, they want us to meet them. And so when we're trying to meet the numbers, it comes from our own general plan. So what we decide today, or whenever we adopt this, will be what we're need, that's what SCAG will use to tell us what we need to meet.
As far as, yeah, the performance of some of the housing parameters, again, their major concern is on the affordable housing end of the spectrum. From our end of it, we're using this to provide a framework for our future. In fact, the policy in your current general plan talks about using these kind of projections for a framework for future looks, but it doesn't prescribe that. So we're not trying to take that number and meet it or facilitate it. We're taking that number to do due diligence on what might be needed in the future.
What's affordable of that 5,670 is probably more pertinent of the discussion.
Yes.
Real quick. So if we took all of our unused parcels and built that to max density, would that hit our RHNA number?
I don't have your current RHNA number yet. That'll be out in the fall. As far as meeting your overall need...
Yes.
I think we did the overall COWG on that 2,000 acres that was talked about before. That was at a very low density.
1.9.
You'd need about 200 and some odd acres at high density to meet this total.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone heard that.
You know, I would also say that in the report itself, it says that we have sufficient land with using all the things from ADUs to Cal State Channel Islands work to farmworker housing to meet the demand right now on page 396. Based on overall remaining dwelling unit potential, there appears to be sufficient supply of land with residential development to accommodate population growth for 2040. So I mean...
Yeah, and the alternatives report, we'll come back and look at what we think is likely. Some of the numbers that were done in the past, they looked at things like auxiliary dwelling units, and they counted 16,000 auxiliary dwelling units being built. And that, that's just not going to happen. If you even look at the, what's happened historically in the county, it's nowhere near as the thousands kind of number. So we want to make sure that we give you something realistic instead of something that's theoretical. But we will go through all those numbers, the numbers that they've talked about for the Channel Island State University, the numbers for farmworker housing complexes that might be proposed. The numbers we think will be taken up by auxiliary dwelling units or secondary units with the changes in the state law and the ease of getting those now. So we'll look at what that has on the potential for producing additional housing. And the auxiliary dwelling units are great for providing more of the affordable housing, because they can provide a lower-cost footprint for housing on existing properties. And so we'll definitely pay attention to that and what we think we can get out of it. We also have to look in the general plan for the policies that are there, and is there something that we're doing that's constraining that to happen? Is there something that would make auxiliary dwelling units happen more often in places they should? Are we holding them back in some means? So we'll look at all that as part of what we go forward in our regulatory construct here.
It is, I think it is real notable, though, that you say that we have the potential to meet all the dwelling units with the current zoning as it is. And you're saying, but it's probably not likely, even though it says in the report that we have that potential, so...
In the background report?
Yes, background report. Page...
Yeah, that came out of your housing element, and they projected every possible way of getting housing units without...
Rezoning.
It needs to be, we're relooking at all that just to give you a good sense of what we think really will happen in the future and how that changes your look at the alternatives. I mean, our job in the next few months is to come up with a package that gives you all those answers that you're asking about today and makes you feel comfortable with the direction you give us as far as what we should and shouldn't do in designing this general plan. This is kind of like, this is the giant recipe card for how we're going to go about it.
You used a phrase, you said, "We want to make sure that the number we use is realistic" in terms of, you said, you know, "Hey, historically, we haven't built that many accessory dwelling units." So you said, "So it's not realistic." And you said, "We want to make sure you're using a realistic number." I guess I want to make sure that you use a number that we think is realistic, right? And so I just want to emphasize a subtle difference there that's important.
It's an important difference. That's why we're doing this report.
Exactly. And the other thing is, we have this 5,670 number there, and that 5,670 number is going to continue to show up in your, in these PowerPoint slides, like when you estimate how much land, et cetera. And yet, you've already told us that it's three per household, and so it's really 3866. And I know we got to be a little bit over, but this is more than, this is nearly 50% over when you go to 5670. And so that means that affects how much land, the acreages, when you list these acreages in terms of how much acreage has to be rezoned for development. So that seems like a, as supervisor parks talked about airing on the high side, that's not, that's 50% over the number that we think fits if you put three per household. So I just, I want to point that out, because that'll keep coming up over and over again in here. Right.
Not to be niggling, but I thought that the figure that you gave was 3.05, which would change the calculation from your 3866 to 3808 dwelling units. Did you hear that?
Sorry. I did not. Apologize.
Not to be a niggler, however, I thought you said that the figure that we should use is 3.05. And so if you divide that, instead of, you know, your 3866, you get 3803. So it's just important that we have accurate numbers that we can all agree on.
Yeah, the numbers we're showing you right now are based on the background report and the information that was contained in that. As part of the alternatives report, you'll have a whole chapter on population projections that we will go through and give you a new look at everything that's currently out there. Again, like I said, there's a separate assessment by Caltrans that's available for population projections that they use as far as your transportation funding. We will also look at what's in SCAG as it may have been updated over the next couple of months, and then we'll look at this historical number. And we'll actually, you know, again, this gave you a shorthand version of one number, but we'll actually show you all three numbers that we've come up with and how we've looked at how those might distribute to the different area plans and existing communities. We won't give you a shortage. You got a slide here, it's obviously missed the mark as far as covering the whole range of what you want to look at. We'll give you all the numbers so that you can tell us exactly what you think's appropriate to be looking for.
I see that you've shown a range of population projections, the 9680 to the 1160, the SCAG, and then historical post-SOR. And it seems like you ought to do the same thing for the projected additional residential dwelling units and use a range rather than the upper limit to add to what's been said previously. And if three, you know, the iPhone has a little calculator on it, and if you use three and divide three into those numbers, you come up with projected additional residential dwelling units ranging from 3227 for the lower number to 3867 for the higher number. Wouldn't that be more appropriate to say we need to provide a range?
Correct. That's what I was referring to. In the alternatives report, it'll show you every projection we have, what the ranges of those projections are. You'll have at least three projections to look at and choose between and evaluate or pick up your own. But yes, we'll give you the full range of everything that's possible.
And both of those numbers are way less than what you've shown up there.
I think we have to continue.
We good? We're good.
We're good. You're done? Okay, everybody's good? All right.
Chinese.
Let's don't have so much detail about the next one. Okay, go ahead.
Well, if you like that, you'll love this. As I mentioned before, a big part of what we do besides the land use is looking at policy alternatives. Now, there are hundreds and hundreds of policies within the general plan, and obviously, we don't want to go through and show choices between every given one of them, but we want to provide some sense of where we're going. As far as land, let me wrap up on land use alternatives. I got ahead of myself my slides. As far as land use alternatives, we listed in our alternatives concept report a few different areas that we might use as looking forward. One is to look at a base case or more of just maintaining the status quo as you go forward. Couple might be looking at existing communities or the area plans themselves to see if there are any changes within them that may be warranted. And again, this will be looking at the different projections that we have, your direction on how much of that housing we should accommodate in these alternatives, and a look at the amount of land and the location of that land that would be required to provide that type of housing, and industrial and commercial uses as well. In addition to this, we believe that you're going to have, we've said we don't think you're going to have large thematic alternatives. Some counties, some cities, you might have an alternatives report that says, "We're going to do the new greenfield development. We're going to expand." Some may say, "We're going to do all infill development." Those broad thematic kind of guidelines work better for cities than they do for counties because of the unique needs of the different parts that make up the county. So we think you're going to have more a look at different jurisdictions, different locations, different existing communities, different area plans, and what might be needed in those areas to meet the needs of their populations, both today and in the future. So the alternatives may be a combination of looking at each place in... So, the alternatives may be a combination of looking at each place individually and how they add up in the overall unincorporated fabric. Don't have the answer for what those might look like today because that will be part of what we come forward with in the fall as far as looking at how we meet these needs. Now, for your next meeting, we do have this scheduled out in July, we can bring you that, we are going to bring you that population growth piece, so you'll be able to weigh in on the population numbers that we're looking at and how those might be distributed among the different areas before we go and do the land use alternatives. So, you'll have a full chance to weigh in on the direction that we're using as far as what that growth might look like. Somebody asked earlier about how many acres might be needed at that higher number. And again, this, we've argued about whether the fifty-six seventy is correct, and that would obviously be lower based on the conversation that you've just stated. But, this is one of the issues where the housing element had problems in the past in that it looked at just converting most of the available land to high-density residential as a way of reducing the footprint of that change. It's not likely that all of your future development is going to be at twenty deus per acre, and so, I don't think that's going to be helpful, but this is only there to give you a range of what it might look like, and just the impacts that density has on the overall consumption of land. The alternatives evaluation criteria. As we look at the different alternatives, it's sometimes helpful to compare and contrast using a graphic format to help display that difference. If you've looked at the Consumer Reports for new cars and tried to pick out a model from the hundreds they show you and all the different parameters, it would be kind of difficult if there wasn't some way to characterize how the performance of those different alternatives performed. We have provided in here, the idea that we've used this in some other alternatives report is to provide a graphic look at how the different alternatives perform. Now, this would be supported by documentation describing how we got to these little symbols, and this was actually added in San Joaquin's alternative report based on input from the public because they wanted something that helped roll it up or gave them a better sense of how these alternatives stacked up to each other without having to read all the background material. So, this will be provided for you for sake of ease of use or ease of comparison, there will be background material provided for each alternative so that you can make a more informed choice as you go through it, but this helps people to look at how these things compare to one another. Earlier in the presentation, they talked about the public giving input, and was mentioned about the fact that we should add in a open space category onto itself as one of these choices, and this will be, after the public comment, will be what we're looking for, is to look at this list of contains twenty-six items under the different topics. Here's some that pertain to land use, and then below that for environmental, and another set dealing with transportation, economic and fiscal health, safety, public facilities, and services. What we're looking for is for the board to provide some guidance on which of these factors make the most sense. If we're to provide a summary table, if we're to provide a table that would be useful to the public in the consumption of this report and the evaluation of alternatives, what might be that set of factors? We had listed out perhaps sixteen of these, we had told the public to look for twelve. There's no magic number in this except twenty-six seems like a lot of things to compare, and so, we were trying to look for a number of factors that might be more to the point for And the final item is dealing with policy questions. What we had is a number of policy questions. These questions have been items that have come up based on public input and public guidance going through, and we want to look at what are the key policy items that you would like to see us bring back to you a solution? So, for an issue such as farm worker housing, bring back a set of policies that deal with the farm worker housing issue. Now, I want to be clear, we're kind of talking about policy choices here, not necessarily alternatives. We're not going to give you the two different ways of doing something, the polar opposites of each other. For land use, you can intensify an area or not intensify an area, they kind of go one way or another. For policy choices, they're a little more complex than that, and so, the answers that we'll give you will be a solution set, and there may be some alternative choices in that solution set that we'll ask you to weigh in on. To give an example of how this would fall out perhaps, this is a example from Merced County. So, for this, they had a question that was brought up through their public process and the input from their board regarding the agricultural residential conflicts and how to deal with them. This was one of their key questions. Now, the interesting thing about policy alternatives is they look at both your existing plan as well as what's missing from your existing plan. So, on this page, for this question, they brought forward what were the key policies that address that question in your current general plan, and they asked, "Should we retain this? Should we delete it or revise it?" Revisions are often driven by the fact that you may have had a policy for twenty years, and if nobody's ever used it, put it to effect, it hasn't really changed what you're after, perhaps it needs to be revised or replaced. Then, we also look at new policy options, things that aren't in your current plan that would address the same topic area. So, what we're looking at today, and this is again, these questions were used to elicit feedback from the public. The bullets that are up here are items that came from our focus groups, from our public open houses, and from the TAC workshops, and so, these are their items, these aren't necessarily vetted by staff or necessary for the report, but what we're going to be asking for is for your input on which of these might be important factors to look at these questions. And the way these questions were originally written to elicit feedback from the community. So, some of the questions actually contain answers in them, so that's just the way they were phrased, we thought we'd keep them that way so you could see the whole context of which this went on. On housing, the question was to help address the need for affordable housing, should alternative housing types be considered, and residential building heights and densities been increased? Now, when that question was asked, we got these key policy items. Now, there were a number of other items that got brought up in every given meeting, these are the ones that had the most comments or the most support as we went through these public meetings or the focus groups. And some of them don't pertain exactly to the question, as you might see as we go through here, but this brought up that issue to the people that were attending. I'm debating about whether you want me to read these to y'all, but this is what we're going to ask. You know, they range from zoning regulations, obviously, the question asked, "Should we look at changing zoning regulations as they pertain to the development potential? Discussing alternative housing types, workforce housing, regional collaboration on housing issues, and the provision of housing near schools and agricultural areas." The second question that was posed dealt with transportation infrastructure. What infrastructure improvements will be vital to meeting future growth, development, and public safety needs? Items that we've provided by the public in the focus groups, freight traffic truck routes in Port Wayneimi, a key issue, this is one of those where the county may have some limited direction on it, a lot of this involves a lot of other organizations, but you have some county roads involved. Incorporation of complete streets components for rural and agricultural areas, retrofitting transportation infrastructure for autonomous vehicles, increase land use intensities to support transit, looking at using both vehicles mile traveled and the current level of service parameters as far as streets' performance for planning metrics, and perhaps reevaluating fire protection and emergency services in rural mountain areas, especially in light of fires that have occurred recently throughout California as well as here. Agriculture as a topic, the question that was posed, "Would should increases in building lot coverage standards for smaller agricultural parcels be considered as a strategy to increase the economic viability of agriculture?" They talked about topics such as agricultural processing and pre-processing and packing facilities, water supply and water use and the application of best management practices, the provision of adequate farm worker housing, using transfer of development rights to incentivize agricultural facility clustering, therefore protecting more of the agricultural lands, and discussion about pesticide use and required buffers. Open space and recreation. Is there a need to clarify uses for open space lands and explore creation of open space zones for park lands and public lands? Financing for county park acquisition and maintenance, open space maintenance, vegetation management, urban and wildland interfaces? This may be others that you want to add to this, and this is what we're going to be asking you, is would you like to add some additional main policy topics we can address for you? Three more of these. Water, an important issue, of course, in the county. Should the county plan for continued water quantity challenges by exploring recharge area preservation? Looking at the feasibility of connecting to the state water project, consolidation of small municipal water companies, increasing water conservation and efficiency standards, including the increased use of reclaimed and recycled water, and the county to lead regional collaboration to address water supply demand, including desalinization. Economic development. What key policies, such as supportive business incubators, upgraded internet infrastructure, and high-tech and clean energy industries, should the county focus on to help foster economic and job growth? Provision of broadband access in the county, tourism and agritourism incentives and increases, increase certainty, decrease processing time for county permits, support industrial manufacturing, and the reestablishment of commercial air service. And the final one deals with climate change. What policies are needed to support the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, increase use of alternative energy, and reduction in vehicles mile travel? County leadership and proactive climate change adaptation and resiliency policies, establishment or provision of microgrids for better energy proficiency, sea level rise and sand management, carbon sequestration, composting organics and food waste in the industries that contribute, and addressing industries that contribute to greenhouse gas production. So, as we mentioned, what we're looking for, and we left the questions in here as stated on the posters and public workshops and stuff so you could see them, these questions would obviously have to be edited and re-wickered a little bit to better address what it is we're talking about for the issues at hand, but what we would do is going back, for each of the items that are shown and read that I read off there, is to go through those and under those questions and to provide policy examples. Some may be trade-offs, some may be overall directions that the county could take in a different direction, maybe shown in different kinds of policies, but the idea is to actually give you something tangible to react to, instead of just throwing out a topic and leading us to our own merits to come up with policy for you, is to show you some choices that can be made and talk about the ramifications of those choices on the county's future, and then to allow you to provide us direction as to how those should be incorporated in the general plan. And that would be coming forward to you for the meeting in the fall as far as being part of an overall look at a preferred alternative. Now, for any of those, once we get the public input, we'll be looking for the commission's input and the board's action as far as the topics that you would like us to go forward with and address, and certainly, we can take things off the table if you don't think it's important, or we can add new topics onto that list as we go back through it. Let Susan take you home.
Thank you, Rick. Did you have any other questions for Rick?
Do you guys want to do questions, or what? We've got thirty speakers, so we got to, I'm telling Lori to bring in cookies for midnight special, so, you know.
We asked our questions already, Lori.
Okay, you're good? Okay, so, we're good. All right, thank you.
Public questions? Yeah, what we were recommending potentially is having the public speakers share their thoughts with you, and then we can go over those slides with you.
Perfect, that's a good idea. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
All right, so, public speakers, we're going to go three minutes on these, and Bruce Inslee first, please.
Excuse me, I just wanted to clarify one point about the fact that this is a joint planning commission board of supervisors meeting. This, as it's been said, this doesn't happen every day, and so, the planning commission, this is also considered, you know, it's a joint meeting, but it's a standalone planning commission meeting, and so, for each item, you know, there's eight recommended actions, and so, the first action only involves a board of supervisors because it's a final approval, but for items numbers two through eight, the planning commission is authorized to make its own motion independent of the board in terms of the direction, and that would be advisory to the board, and so, then, the board obviously would get that input from the planning commission, and the board's subsequent motion will be the direction to staff, but the planning commission basically has the authority to move each of those items and inform the board what their advising be done.
Great.
And hopefully, that's clear.
That's good, I appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Can we clarify during that discussion, can the supervisors also have some discussion into what the commission is talking about, or do you want to hold our comments until after they voted and then do ours?
That's up to you, it might be, it might make more sense to have kind of a joint deliberation.
I just wanted to make sure there was clarification.
Yeah, but that's up to the will of the commission and your board.
Thank you.
We have a similar situation on the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, we have an advisory committee, and they discuss it, they talk, and then they vote, and then it goes to the board, and then they also discuss it after hearing them, and then they vote. So, that's a potential way of doing it.
All right, so, we're good. Bruce, you're up.
Thank you, good afternoon, Chairman Fia, members of the board and commission, Bruce Inslee, Economic Development Corporation. First quick comment, thanks so much, hugely appreciate the inclusion of an economic development element in the general plan. We want to believe, of course, that economic development is about economic opportunity, regional competitiveness, leading to quality of life, so wholly fitting in the general plan, and appreciate that. Comments focused kind of around the areas, obviously, the economic development element, but this notion of concentrating growth and potential development. The first issue is around housing and jobs balance. Absolutely understand the concentration on needing to identify where we're going to put housing, but the issue we have is a lack of creation of jobs relative to even the slug growth of population in Ventura County, and even more specifically, the shortage of jobs over the last twenty years relative to the population in Ventura County. So, believe it as a holistic regional strategy, making sure that we're optimizing, being smart, and preserving opportunity for locating jobs in county unincorporated areas, even while, of course, we wholly agree we want to move them into the cities, but we don't want to foreclose opportunity where there may be some that exist. Second quick comment is, previously, the board has adopted an economic vitality strategic plan with numerous recommendations, very comprehensive, and just want to make sure that we're encouraging that as the economic development element and those questions that were raised earlier are being bounced off that vitality plan to make sure that we're getting maximum value out of that intelligence that's already been gathered. To the degree that we want to concentrate on these specifics, you've identified them, issue related to manufacturing, it's nearly twenty-five percent of our economy, while we want it in the cities, we don't want to lose opportunities elsewhere in some of the undeveloped, potentially, industrial lands. Agriculture is the other huge piece of the economy, you had it on your slide a moment ago about food processing, we're not here just to promote that, but making sure that our general plan is savvy to issues about the evolving and long-term sustainability of food systems and agriculture, and we preserve that. And a piece on broadband and infrastructure, we've decentralized development in Ventura County, which means the unincorporated areas where we drive back and forth to get to our job centers, so concentrating on the development or the maintenance of roads in partnership with VCTC, but communication infrastructure are the huge pieces to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Bob Poole? And then Yvonne Milliken? McMillan, I'm sorry, McMillan?
Good afternoon, commissioners, board of supervisors. I'm wondering why there's not an energy element in this thing. The common factor with all of these things has to do with energy, and so, what I would like to do is contribute a couple of pieces of information to get you thinking about as you go forward because the energy component is clearly... you thinking about as you go forward, because the energy component is clearly a critical dynamic to everything. Currently, Ventura County only produces about half of the petroleum that it uses. Now, it does better than the state. The state only produces about a third, but these numbers are large, and the rest of it is coming in from overseas. Even our governor has underscored that, and I'd like to read a quote from him. Wrong page here. He says, "I don't think it's responsible to let third-world countries do the oil production so the Californians can drive around, even in their hybrids. We have to shoulder our part of the responsibility." And so, Ventura County, we're fortunate, we do have additional reserves here, and we have SEQA. So, when you're thinking global, acting local, so to speak, and this affects all the issues, this affects the climate change component, this affects the environmental justice component. What we're doing is California is importing over a million barrels of oil every day into our ports, from countries where human rights violations are rampant and where the environmental regulations are not nearly as stringent as they are here. And so, I would simply submit to you that it's important that we consider maximizing the opportunity to produce our own energy right here at home, where we have control over it, and then we can do the best thing in the present moment. And just to underscore that, the federal government, the Energy Information Administration, projects all of the various energy supply and demand throughout 2040, coincidentally. And with a twelve percent increase in demand, we are still going to be depending on fossil fuels for over eighty percent of our energy. So that's a sober reality, and I think as we go forward, we need to be mindful of the fact that Ventura does have a fairly robust energy industry here. We have plenty more we can do, recreating lots of jobs, almost six thousand jobs, for example. Three hundred and seven million dollars last year through the LA Economic Development Association, in terms of taxes, state and local. So, we're a significant economic entity here, and we're producing the thing that makes everything else work, and that's energy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne McMillan? Is she here? There she is. Here? No? McMillan, no? No, okay. Rich Atmore? And then Tony Skinner after?
Chairman Foye, supervisors and commissioners, thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Richard Atmore. I am here today in my capacity as president of the Coastal Energy Alliance. The Coastal Energy Alliance is a group of local stakeholders who promote the responsible use and production of our local energy supplies. You know, as this general plan process takes place, I'd like to just mention in general how much I admire the county of Ventura and their staff for the process that we've gone through, with the open houses and the, you know, the focus groups. They've been very productive. And for us to be able to sit in the room with people, we find out that when we sit in the same room with channel keepers and other people in our community that we always thought we had friction with, we find out we have a lot more in common than we really thought. And the next thing you know, we have those people out to our farms and our ranches to show them how we've been responsible stewards for over these years. And the same goes for our oil production partners in the Ventura foothills, in the Ventura County in particular. You know, today, I have a habitat restoration company. We do a lot of rundo removal and a lot of mitigation site planning and implementation. And I have twelve men today working in the Ventura Avenue Oil Field, repairing restoration sites that were damaged during the Thomas Fire. And all twelve of these men have high-paying head-of-household jobs. All twelve of them are immigrants, and three of those live in employee housing that we provide as part of their jobs, so that we can retain their services, because they're first-class guys, they've been with us over twenty-two years, and it's important, when you have good people, to be able to keep them, so you can provide these types of services. So that's the kind of jobs that our oil industry provides, are jobs that are high-paying, good jobs, that sixty percent of the people that work in the oil field come from Oxnard or Santa Paul or some of our underserved communities, and they've really moved ahead in our society to do good. So with that, I want you to think as we go through this process about how we can include our energy partners and keep them at the table, so we can all become better stewards and run a better ship. And, you know, one thing, getting back, putting my agriculture, my open-space hat on, you know, on our ranch, we started a conservation trust, so that we could protect over sixteen-hundred acres so far in permanent open space and keep it in ranching forever, and the way it's been, like our community likes it. And so, back to Supervisor Bennett's question earlier about open space, I think it is important to protect open space, and some of the ways I think we can do it, and look at this plan, are maybe that when the Trust for Public Land came forward and said, "Let's look at a tax initiative, where we can actually buy open space so the public can enjoy it," or maybe include open space in the Williamson Act, so people with open-spaced land are more encouraged to keep in open-spaced land and keep their families ranching and farming in future generations. And again, thank you for having me here today, and thank you very much for the process.
Thanks, Rich, appreciate it. Tony Skinner, please. Is Tony here? No? And then Zeb? I don't know, Zeb, how to say it, honestly.
Grzalba, maybe?
Grzalba? No? Stephanie Caldwell? Stephanie Caldwell? Adam Van Tassel? No? Andy Castello? There we go. Got somebody. Castillo? Castillo? There you go. Don't listen to what I say.
That's all right. Good afternoon, Chairman Foye, members of the board and planning commission. My name is Andy Castillo, and I'm here on behalf of Launa Local 585. As the county sets forth its vision on the future look, feel, and direction of the county through the general planning process, the Labor's Local 585 appreciates the ability to participate and offer comments. With over a thousand members, sixty million in annual payroll, our members are key economic and social stakeholders to the future growth and prosperity of the place we call home, Ventura County. As county stakeholders think about alternative concepts of development in Phase Four of the GPL, on behalf of the Labor's Local 585, we offer suggestions on broad policy tools to use in future county development proposals. The Labor's respectfully requests that a local hire provision be required, when feasible, as a condition of project approval of large public works, projects through the use of project labor agreements, or other agreements as agreed by the Labor's Local 585 and the local building trades more broadly. On major public work projects, having a stable and skilled labor pool is critical to getting projects done on time and on budget. The Labor's Local 585 and the local building trades offer a locally sourced, skilled labor force that can get the job done. Outsourcing labor from outside the county should be the exception, not the rule. Workers from outside the county clawed up our local roads and highways. In addition, by using the local labor force, dollars are recirculated in the local economy as local salaries stay local and the county avoids leakage, and gets a return on their investment from local taxes. In the private sector, this is working successfully. In the oil and gas industry, our labors are specifically trained and highly skilled to work in a sensitive working environment. Our project labor agreements within this industry has provided high-paying jobs that are supporting hundreds of families around the county. The oil and gas industry is an economic engine, benefiting local families and helping California become energy-independent. Likewise, we are supportive of land use decisions that are conducive to converting vacant and underutilized land into renewable energy sites, such as the proposed film of Ventura Solar Project.
Okay, Andy, our time's up here.
Well, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Michelle Newell? And then Jack Breker? Breker? And then Carlos Martinez? Thank you.
Good afternoon, supervisors and commissioners, excuse my voice, so, a little hoarse today. I'm here today representing the Ventura Chambers. Stephanie Caldwell could not make it today, and was asked to read this statement. As the general plan develops the alternatives report, the chamber respectfully asks that you also consider studying the economic impact of importing oil and gas versus producing it here in Ventura County. Oil production in Ventura County supports more than twelve thousand jobs that in turn support families in our county. The income these workers earn is put back into our local restaurants and stores, which boosts our local economy. If we expand our ability to produce energy locally, we could bring more jobs to our area and in turn further grow our local economy. This should be reflected in the economic development section of the general plan. The chamber looks forward to being part of the conversation as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jack? Is he here? There he is. And then Carlos Martinez?
Good afternoon, and happy Tax Day, indeed. Given that it is Tax Day, I feel that it's appropriate to talk about the fiscal and economic benefits of the oil and gas industry for Ventura County. Oil and gas production has been a part of Ventura County for over a century, providing thousands of good-paying jobs for working-class families throughout the region. Oil and gas production in Ventura County is responsible, is also responsible for tens of millions of dollars in local, in state and local tax revenues for Ventura County. These provide, these tax revenues help provide the vital community services that we depend upon, like police and fire protection, as well as schools. Efforts to further hamper or shut down energy production altogether in the county will jeopardize millions of dollars in county-wide labor income, economic output, and funding for vital community services. The positive impacts of local oil and gas production are clear, so please give due consideration to these impacts as you continue to evaluate and draft the updated county general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Could I ask who you represent?
I'm speaking on behalf of Californians for Energy Independence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Martinez, please, and then Sean Profsky?
My name's Carlos Martinez. We have a twenty-acre property in Santa Paula, California, and we're getting encroached. We have some larger companies there, Granite Construction. We've farmed there for about sixty years, and we feel that we want to be in the general plan of some, you know, changes that are, you're planning. Maybe we could have some industrial use for our property that could help expansion of granite construction in all of that area, and even maybe for some commercial property that where we can get it back into some type of farming again, and some types of different enclosures, maybe some buildings and stuff like that. We just want you to take our property into consideration and for your general plan move.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and speaking, thank you. Sean Profsky, and then Sandy Smith?
Hello again, supervisors and planning commission members. My name's Sean Profsky with the Ventura County Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business. There are a number of land use alternatives that have the potential to greatly enhance local economic growth, create jobs here, and improve our quality of life. One major way we can do this is by expanding the ability of local farmers to do processing. With the ongoing farmworker labor shortage and with automated harvesting techniques becoming more and more sophisticated and affordable, processing is a major way we can promote jobs in the ag industry. Expanding the ability to do processing would not only allow local farms to sell finished product locally, it would also help support ag tourism. Local farms will have an easier time attracting tourists if they have the ability to sell a unique product and experience unavailable anywhere else. Allowing local processing will include such things like additives and bottling in order to give growers the ability to provide diverse products. It will also require that we expand both the maximum size of processing operation, currently limited at three acres, as well as increasing the total allowed acreage county-wide from its current small amount of twelve acres. The county should also consider some of the ideas promoted by VCSIDA and EDCVC to support manufacturing industries located in the unincorporated areas of the county. This would include not only supporting existing businesses, but identifying areas where zoning for manufacturing would be appropriate. The county should also facilitate infrastructure connections like sewer and water that could support these industries. One more idea that would be beneficial is utilizing our county's existing rail infrastructure. Redesigning land use near rail spurs and supporting projects within rail corridors would facilitate the use of this infrastructure to support local businesses. It would also have the benefit of reducing truck traffic on local roads and decreasing our vehicle emissions. With these reasonable changes, we can go a long way towards expanding the ability for local farmers and business owners to provide more jobs and promote economic growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I just ask for clarity?
Yes, ma'am.
All the different projects that you are suggesting, would those be instead of farmland?
Well, as far as local processing is concerned...
And the rail spur, and the ag facilities?
It depends on the, it depends on the project. I think the board should, you know, look at where these opportunities are appropriate, you know, and specifically looking for, you know, parcels of land that are underutilized, and where it might be appropriate to locate these things.
Fair enough, thanks.
Thank you. Sandy Smith, Lynn Jensen, after that?
Chairman Foye, members of the board and the commission, Sandy Smith. I'm here representing the Ventura County Economic Development Association today, and I was a member of the general plan focus group on the economy. Bruce went first, and then I did not write my comments with him. I'm clearly hanging around with him way too much, but, so this is gonna, some of these things are gonna sound very familiar, but when I, when I last appeared and spoke before the board, representing VCSIDA, it was to add my voice and our voice to those who supported the idea of adding the economy as an element to the general plan. I want to thank the board for including the economy section into this report. At that time, I noted the importance of manufacturing to our county, and I think it was previously stated it is a focus area for VCSIDA this year, and that manufacturing represented the number-one driver of our local economy, and along with ag, our businesses that are located often in unincorporated areas. Given that for the next thirty years, our land use policies will focus residential growth within the curbs of our cities and urban centers, and given the pressures that will be placed on finding sites for that development, it is very important to support the land use alternative that would include analysis of parcels within some or all of the twenty-two designated existing communities, those parcels that are already developed with urban, residential, commercial, or industrial uses. This analysis can help identify properties that can serve our regional economy in the decades to come. There is also a way to connect the dots between your general plan and your adopted economic vitality strategic plan. Many of the goals and objectives and the implementation strategies of that plan recognize the role of the county as a convener and as a supportive voice of innovation and cooperative relationships, building those relationships throughout the region. That same role can apply within the goals and objectives of your general plan. The businesses that VCSIDA represents have identified housing as the number-one constraint in either attracting a workforce or retaining those currently employed. The county will still be expected to meet its regional housing allocation requirements, and as such, has an opportunity to focus on innovations in workforce housing and farmworker housing that can serve as examples for best practices throughout the region. My last comment is to first congratulate staff for that. The VCSIDA believes that the, a very comprehensive and well-articulated economic vitality plan urges the board to, whenever possible, to integrate elements of the vitality plan into the general plan. And in closing, VCSIDA appreciates the opportunity that we have been given to be a participant in this process, and again, respectfully asks you, board, to support the land use alternative that would analyze all of the existing communities with the, in the unincorporated areas to support our regional economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Lynn Jensen, Becky Poole, after that?
Good morning, Lynn Jensen, with Ventura County Colab. The agricultural guiding principle recognized, recognizes that the agricultural industry depends on the availability of water, land, and farmworker housing. But there are many misconceptions about agriculture. Agriculture is mostly on private lands. It is not a buffer to housing or schools, it's not a free view shed, and it's not a place for public recreation. Farmers have a right to farm, and the right-to-farm document needs to be added to the new agricultural element for the public to see. The alternative report needs to add an analysis of potential for farmworker housing complexes on unincorporated agriculture and open-spaced lands to promote affordable and workforce housing. Workforce housing was highly supported by stakeholder and focus groups, it was number two in importance, and it's also important to the Mesteco community. The county... The county needs to prepare a GIS exhibit with constraints analysis to determine where this farm worker housing complexes can be built as part of the housing analysis as a separate need. We've been having this farm worker discussion, farm worker housing discussion for decades and really we've had no significant progress. Farm worker housing complexes are allowed on AE and open space zoning and there's actually a goal in the general plan right now to evaluate development standards and that really speaks to the regulatory hurdles that it takes to connect to water, sewer, and wastewater infrastructure in the county. Colab supports the development of farm worker complexes on agricultural lands adjacent to state schools and that's due to the restrictions of a half a mile around schools for pest control. Farmlands in the urban interface are not buffers. They're productive farmlands. Farm worker complex developments that are built next to these schools would be required to provide appropriate buffers to adjacent farming operations which is needed in the plan development process. The second part is water. Maintaining water for agriculture is critical to keep farmland and agricultural production. SOAR does not protect ag land from being fallowed and, and converted to alternative energy projects. The alternatives report needs to include a projection of the amount of farmland that could be fallowed due to water allocations under SIGMA because that could be a problem down the road. And on the land side, we believe to achieve permanent conservation of agricultural lands, the core of the ag lands in the county, the county needs to provide the alternative of clustering structures and facilities and allow the transfer of entitlements. These alternatives are in the San Luis Obispo agricultural element. We believe this will minimize ag land conserv- conservation as, as clustering of facilities keeps larger parcels in production. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Paul and Robin Gerber's next.
Thank you for having us. Review of the big picture, hurricanes, tornadoes, major floods, and as we know too well, forest fires have increased in size and frequency. Sea levels are rising and the ocean's characteristics have been altered because instead of our having a max balance of 350 parts per million carbon, we are already up to 410 in December. Now the change required of us is urgent. We can no longer spend our energies fighting over oil. With coal and natural gas, oil is what is escalating earth, water, and air temperatures. The Thomas Fire causes were not unrelated to these increased temperatures and cost huge, public and personal cost in this county. Unrestricted support of oil locally is in need of balance by acknowledging that fossil fuels are a contributor to the imbalances causing natural disasters and chain reactions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin Gerber, Bruce Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors and Commissioners, I'm Robin Gerber representing Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. In terms of the alternative concepts report and I also, we really want to thank staff for all the hard work they did to include everyone, include all the comments. In terms of the 26 preliminary alternatives evaluation criteria and cutting those down to 16, we just want to point out that the guiding principles identified by the board particularly concern, and we are particularly concerned about retaining the criteria identified as planning for climate change and resilience and also the criteria promote environmental justice. So, when those are cut down, we want to be sure that those two are still in there. As to the policy topics, policy topic five, addressing water quantity, but not water quality. We suggest adding the following question. Should the county increase protections for surface and groundwater supplies from potential pollutants? By increasing water quality protection, the county can avoid exacerbating water supply challenges that are subject to further reduction due to the effects of climate change. On policy topic six, we support the policy topic as it's proposed, but we request that the county interpret this policy broadly to apply to a range of developments and hazards. For instance, improperly cited industrial developments can also result in public health and environmental disasters like polluting spills or emission leaks if they are cited in seismically active areas or areas prone to flooding. And finally, on policy topic seven, which addresses the implementation of health in all policies, we suggest adding access to clean air and clean water to the other areas listed. This revision is critical because lack of clean air and clean water has immediate health impacts and also implicates a community's ability to engage in physical activity and use of community facilities and parks. We appreciate the opportunity to comment, all the work that has been done and the continued opportunity to participate in the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Bruce Smith, Martin Rodriguez, after that.
Good afternoon, members of the board and planning commission. My name is Bruce Smith and I'm representing myself as a private citizen of this county. I did provide written comments. Inadvertently, they got too late, but nonetheless, you have those. I just want to hit a couple of highlights of those. First of all, I appreciate the discussion that went on between what do we do with population, household, and employment forecasts from another agency versus our own land use plans and that is an interplay that goes on between them. I understand that. But they're, they are extremely suspect when the, the growth rate for the unincorporated area is 20% higher than the county as a whole, which is totally disparate with what has happened historically. So, that's huge. Now, for the sake of analysis, you may want to use SKAGs just as a, you know, to see what the worst case scenario would be. That's fine, but keep in mind, they were artificially high in my opinion to begin with. Also, the historical growth rate, if I presume correctly, although it's not real clear in the report, is that, that the historic growth rate, what they're really looking at is using the historic growth rate over the last 16 years and applying that forward. But if you actually, if you look at the full 26 years, the growth rate for the unincorporated area has been going down. So, by all rights, if you really look at that, then in fact, the growth rate would not be what it's been over the last 16 years, but in fact, something less than that because it is a downward trend. Probably the most important thing I want to put forth to your board is that I attended three focus group meetings, one on transportation, one on economic development, and another on housing. And I was struck by the fact that the same theme came across in all three and that had to do with affordability of housing. Statement on transportation, if the affordable housing, if the housing is not in proximity to the jobs, what happens? Traffic. Longer distances and somebody alluded to, all the traffic that has to go between point A and point B within the county. That's huge. The second point was economic development. We're stymied because we don't have affordable housing for a viable workforce. Good point. The other aspect is that, the problem with housing, affordable housing, it's stymied by depressed wages and potential homeowner, of the potential homeowners and renters and lack of adequate financial resources for land acquisition, construction improvements to public infrastructure, and lack of political will. So, I propose the following concept.
We've got to, Bruce, we've got to go quick.
Okay, real quick. New employment and new housing proportionate to serve those new jobs should be located in the same community and should be linked by concurrency of construction, housing impact mitigation fees, and adequacy and times, timing of public facilities and services. To be truly effective, this shouldn't be just our jurisdiction, but in fact, should be all the cities and the county combined.
Great. Thank you for your color.
So, for all my, any questions?
I, could you please repeat that? Could you just please repeat that regarding the proportionality concept that you suggested? I didn't get it.
So, part of the problem is the location of new jobs to new housing and whether or not the housing is affordable. And so, if, if the housing is off in the east end of the county or west end of the county and the jobs are in another locale, you're still going to have the traffic problem. So, as we look at area by area, I would assert that you should look on a communitywide basis of ensuring linkages between job growth and housing that's affordable. That way, you address one fundamental issue, which is keep the vehicle miles traveled down to a fairly low level by comparison.
Right. All right. Well, thank you, Bruce. Appreciate, oh, you got something else?
Well, I think Bruce Stensley said the same thing regarding a jobs-housing balance. Are you saying the same thing?
Yes, but with one additional caveat, that they should, need to be located in proximity to each other and linked in terms of their timing of, of being provided.
I think you make a good point. We saw that on the transportation survey that was done that Ventura County has a real problem with so many people leaving the county or jobs aren't close to where they live. So, it's a real problem. All right. Thank you. Martin Rodriguez and then Fred Van Wingerton.
Good afternoon, Chair Foy, Commissioners, Supervisors. My name's Martin Rodriguez, President of the Tri-County Building and Construction Trades. And my daily fight is on behalf of the hardworking men and women in the construction industry. One of the things that we do is ensure career opportunities and training and there is no other place they get it other than the building trades. We're the only apprenticeship programs that are state certified. One of the key points that I see almost all the speakers bringing up here is about community, reinvestment, jobs. And one of the mechanisms we use in ensuring that all these things are met is a project labor agreement, which is basically reinvesting in your community. It's keeping your local force, local workforce trained, building it up here, and creating your jobs. Any construction industry that is, or project that is built in the county should be under a project labor agreement. It's smart business. Alls we have to do is look to the south and you can see where this mechanism is working. One of the cities that closely parallels, one of our cities here in Oxnard is the city of Long Beach. Almost all their work is exclusively done under project labor agreements and it's a renaissance like no other. The numbers are there, they're easily Googled up. Dan Parsons from, or Dan Sloan from Parsons Administrative Group can provide these. I can provide them. It's a no-brainer anymore to how these things work and in the past, there's, you, people would generally go to Google and you get 54 and 50 against why you don't have them. Almost anything in there on a negative can be rebutted and, and can be shown factual. It's, it's just that easy. So, moving forward, almost all 12 points on this general plan, we feel that can be addressed by a project labor agreement. Working with the oil and gas industry is one of our key partners and it, it shows that we can keep and train a skilled workforce here, working with these people. Appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. And then Fred and then Jan Dietrich.
Good afternoon, Board and Planning Commission. My name is Fred Van Wingerton with Pyramid Flowers. I was also a member of the ACT focus group. I think we have a real opportunity here with this 20-year plan that we're working on. As the people of Ventura have said, save our ag resources. There's a number of elements that have been brought forth, what we can do to ensure that agriculture remains vital and viable in this community. So, I ask to please that you listen to those that are being presented and to include them in the plan that is going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Jan, please, there she is, and then Terry Farrow.
I commend so heartily the planning department's work, the outreach, especially that workshop in Oxnard in Spanish and the environmental justice workshop was, was such an opportunity for learning and dialogue. With regard to the evaluation criteria, under environmental and the climate change criterion, it says plan for climate change and resilience. And when I look at the grammar of that, it sounds like it's mainly about adaptation. I want to make sure it's clear that plan for climate change means planned for meeting target, goals and targets for climate mitigation and carbon sequestration, emissions reduction, and climate resilience. Also, I want to make sure that it's understood in, in the transportation criterion, under reducing congestion, that that does not mean widening the roads. Our overarching concern from a climate activist perspective is how the baseline inventory for the greenhouse gas emissions is incomplete. There is a 2014 Global Protocol for Community Scale Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventories. It actually has an acronym, GPC, that could be helpful. It shows how to break down categories for reaching vehicle miles traveled for all sectors and even subsectors and also with vessel and aviation emissions and end-use distribution of our exports. This has implications for the major focus in the guiding principle on global markets for ag products. In Sonoma County, they lost their lawsuit because the Climate Action Plan did not include those emissions or the emissions resulting from tourism. Regarding carbon sequestration, this is a vital criterion that we want to make sure is included in the climate, the climate action criterion. Baseline, the state is actually almost finished testing tools for doing baseline inventories for each county of our carbon sinks to characterize different land uses and set goals and track by satellite LiDAR technology how we're doing on sequestering carbon. This is the future. We would like to collaborate with the planning department on a workshop about goals for carbon sequestration on natural and working lands and these monitoring tools. And we'd like to have a workshop on the Global Protocol for Community Scale Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventories. The biggest consideration is what Supervisor Parks mentioned, that the EIR is going to require looking at alternatives. And particularly, the alternative is, what is the consequence of the failure of this plan? It's planetary destabilization of which, to which we are contributing. Experts around the state are looking forward to how Ventura County addresses climate change.
Your time's up, Jan.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on one question, if I may. You were talking about sequestering carbon on natural land. That includes open space? Is it including?
There's a web page on the ARB website that exactly defines carbon sequestration on natural and working lands.
So, it includes farmland as well?
Yes.
Okay. And did you say that another jurisdiction had this or is this something that we would be?
I mentioned the Sonoma County Regional Climate Action Plan that lost a lawsuit because its greenhouse gas inventories were not complete. On two, on three different issues, one of them being their exports of wine bottles, the other one being all the driving around that their tourists do, and a third one being the assessment of vehicle miles traveled around some of the hotels.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Terry, please, and then Lisa Woodburn. Pat Logoman after.
Hi, I'm Terry Farrow. Chairman Foy, members of the Council and Planning Commission, did I get that right?
You got it all.
Okay. All right. So, I'm here right now representing myself, an agricultural family from the Oxnard, Las Postes area. I would like to speak in support. Colab sent a letter dated August, or April 12th, regarding some of the issues on the general plan. And I wanted to comment on some of the agriculture and water elements they have. And I wanted to comment in, in support of their goals and policies to facilitate new innovative water supply projects for the benefit of the community and agriculture, and agriculture, and to active, and to support the county, acting as a facilitator to coordinate and expedite approval of water supply projects. We're going to need this. Everybody knows we're going to need this, but we're going to need help. These things are expensive, and there's a lot of hoops to jump through, okay? And also to encourage a wide range of solutions for water supply projects, and also encourage cities to find alternatives for their water supply so you can free up some water for agriculture, because many of the agriculture parcels in this county don't have other, other water supplies. They, they either have groundwater, or they have nothing, okay? So, I still have time, good. So, now, this is kind of anecdotal, but I'm a, a native of this county, okay? I was born and raised in Ventura, still live here. And I, I just, I, I was struck when we first started the comments about how many people were supporting petroleum-type projects, okay? My father, he worked in the oil fields, okay? Almost everybody I knew worked in the oil fields, okay? And then people stayed here and got jobs in the oil fields. Now, you can argue about why that went away a lot, okay? There were a lot of reasons why that went away. But what I'm trying to say to you right now is, think another generation ahead. Do you want to be the people that didn't support agriculture? So, the next generation of commenters will come up here and say to you, you have to support, we need to bring back agriculture. Those are good jobs, those are, you know, great for our county. So, just anecdotal, but I, I, it really struck me when I was sitting there that, yeah, yeah, that's, that's true. We have to keep this. We have the climate, we have great soils, all right? Water's a problem, so let's solve that water piece, okay? Let's, I, I would encourage you to help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry, appreciate it. Lisa, and then Pat.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners and Supervisors. My name is Lisa Woodburn, I'm with Jensen Design and Survey, and I'm here today representing Hagel Lumber Company. Hagel Lumber is located at 3100 Somas Road, within a small cluster of properties designated existing community. We are proposing a land use designation, designation change on thirteen and a half acres, from an agricultural land use designation to an existing community land use designation to allow more room for them to store their lumber. There has been overwhelming support for the Hagel Lumber General Plan Amendment from the county's Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, the Somas MAC, your Planning Commission, and your board through the general plan screening process, in which time you found that the Hagel General Plan Amendment would be in the general public interest. This overwhelming support is based on a number of factors. The first is that the agricultural land adjacent to the lumberyard is too small to sustain a viable farming operation. Also, Hagel relies on an existing rail spur for delivery of lumber, which removes a considerable amount of truck traffic from our regional road network. This is the, the only parcel in Ventura County that's greater than ten acres in size that has an active rail spur. Delivery by rail also reduces carbon emissions. The Union Pacific Railroad estimated that Hagel Lumber reduced their carbon footprint by 2,390 metric tons of CO2 in 2017 by using railcar delivery instead of truck shipments. Supporting this general plan amendment supports a local business that has been in operation at this location for over thirty years. The Ventura County Economic Vitality Strategic Plan encourages the retention and growth of existing businesses. In addition, the Hagel Lumber General Plan Amendment is consistent with the county's general plan vision and guiding principles of land use and community character, economic vitality, circulation, transportation, mobility, housing, conservation and open space, infrastructure and services, and climate change and resilience. So, when going through the process of a comprehensive general plan update, you can take this opportunity to clean up existing land use inconsistencies. We request that you consider fixing an anomaly that exists at the Hagel lumberyard, and direct staff to include the Hagel Lumber General Plan Amendment as a land use alternative that warrants additional analysis. Thank you.
Lisa, go ahead.
I have a question. The anomaly is that it, the prime farmland got paved over without properly rezoning it first.
Well, no, my, my point would be that the anomaly is that it was only thirteen and a half acres, which really isn't a feasible land you.
Okay, but the situation is what the situation is. But my question is, the request seems to be to put it into the alternative concept report. My question is, would it be sufficient if it were in the alternative section of the EIR?
I would really like it to be part of the consideration of the general plan moving forward. Not just as an alternative in the EIR. Thank you.
Is that, is that one location you said with ten acres or more? Is it the only place in the county that would qualify for this?
That's my understanding. In the, in the report, the staff report that was prepared for the general plan amendment screening, staff included a section in there about the rail spur, and about that this was really the only large parcel that had an active rail spur.
Right. Is that over here from Planning, or that's true? Okay, so, if that is, it doesn't open up other avenues for other things happening throughout the county if there was just this one?
If, if you decide for large parcels, correct?
Yeah, for a large parcel. Okay, that's great. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Pat, and then Sanger Hedrick.
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors and Commissioners. I'm not going to, I think Lisa pretty well covered it, and I just want to say that I think, in going through this, we have a general plan amendment application in process, and this thing has been studied up, down, and sideways. It began about nine years ago over a dispute with the county over storage of lumber in an ag, which we don't need to rehearse. I mean, everything we, everybody we've talked to, from the Somas MAC, to AIPAC, the Planning Commission, is that this is an odd configuration. You've got all the property around it is industrial and so forth, and it just makes sense for this property. And going through this process and being aware of the general plan updated, we just think this is a good candidate to perhaps consider as you're going through this, to be consistent. It's the same thing, it's, it's looking at what should be fixed in the county as a whole, and I think it's, it's worthy for your consideration, and I appreciate it.
Can I ask again, regardless, because there's SOAR in place, if you want to change the general plan from farmland to another use that goes to a vote of the people, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, the request that you're having is to, how, how would we incorporate it into the general plan? We certainly couldn't do it in the land use element, right? Because that requires a vote of the people first.
I think you can make this, okay, my understanding, Supervisor, is that it could be adopted as part of the general plan update. It would probably be conditioned on a SOAR vote, certainly.
Okay, maybe we'll ask staff when we're done with public comment.
I think it would require SOAR, but, but are, am I out, have I passed my time?
Oh, no, if you can answer the, you, you have some more time. If you had anything you want us to talk about, but.
No, I mean, just, our concern has been the politics of SOAR with regard to this particular property, not because we're developers, or, it's just that it's a, it's a large body of people making a decision about a small lumberyard, by the way, the only wholesale lumberyard in the county. And so, we feel that if you support this, we've always taken, we've not been shy about saying, the more the county supports us, the better. And county has been supportive. Susan Curtis has studied this thing every which way, and so the work's been done. She did the initial study. So, the more we have from the county, the better off we are, and that's just fact.
Steve, okay.
Staff, just to clear things up, could you tell us what would happen if the board went forward? What, what has to happen for Hagel Lumber? Do you have some, something up your sleeve that we need to know about, or, you know? I don't mean that in a negative.
No, no, you're not, you're not wearing sleeves today, so.
I mean, is there something we, you know, I mean, he seems to think, do we have to, would there have to be a vote, all of that?
Right, so Supervisor Bennett, I don't believe that we know the answer to that yet, right? So, we've just seen the, the email exchanges. If the board wants us to pursue that, you know, we would probably pursue that. If, if we were short on industrial land, we would look to the entire county for industrial land, not necessarily at one spot. But if the board directed us today, based on, to testimony that I've heard, to look specifically at these places, we would come back in, in August and, and have a more robust answer for you.
Does that work? That's what you're talking?
That, that's what we're asking for, for more consideration, at this stage.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
But regardless, it would have to be a SOAR vote. Are you saying that's in question? Does County Council have a thought?
Yes, at the end of the process, it would be redesignating it, like you said, from farmland to a more industrial use, so it would require SOAR vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Foye, Supervisors and Commissioners. I'm Sanger Hedrick. I'm here this afternoon representing AIPAC, the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, not to be confused with Sandy Hedrick, who was here this morning with his conservation hat on, which I appreciate the Earth Day awards. But, but we can wear two hats. You know, AIPAC has had the opportunity to have the staff, the planning staff, in two or three times to go through, keep us up with the process that's going on. And I've seen most of the comments that we have have been reiterated already. I think it's really important to keep in mind how important agriculture is, both economically for the county, and just in terms of what the county is aesthetically, the, the, the whole, the whole feel of it. And, you know, I'm a third-generation farmer. My grandfather raised lima beans and apricots. My father raised oranges, you know? All of those are gone. I mean, you have to be aware that in twenty years, the list of agricultural products is going to be probably quite different from what it is now. I mean, they're just market forces, technology, people's tastes, and regulations, government regulations. All those things are always making it very difficult for farmers to, to find the right thing. I think one of the key points that we talked about a lot is that the farm, the farm products are going to need to be, find new ways to add value, and that's going to be through processing. And so, we would like to see flexibility built into the, to the lot coverage requirements, maybe so that entitlements could be shared or shifted, or, or combined, where people have a number of parcels to enable building of facilities for processing, or indoor housing. So, that's, that's a key thing. I think we want to build in flexibility. And I just wanted to mention, also, we have great support for the Williamson Act, LCA, and would like to see that expanded to open space. And also, to include the right to farm ordinance in the agricultural element. Feel that's very important. And we also did support the Hagel Lumber General Plan Amendment. However, that needs to be approved. We did feel that was a logical thing for that piece of property.
Thank you, Sanger, appreciate that. Jennifer Hernandez Munoz, is she here? Oh, there she is. And then Ron Whitehurst and Russell Sidney after that.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of CAWS, the Central Coast Alliance United for a Sustainable Economy. We're a local organization with a seventeen-year history of advocating for public policy and to advance social, economic, and environmental justice in Ventura County. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on planning for community-oriented farmworker housing, affordable family housing, identifying and engaging with disadvantaged communities, as well as incorporating environmental justice into the current general plan update. We, let's see, affordable farmworker housing is a much-needed resource in our county. We urge the county to consider farmworker housing from a community health perspective, where housing is affordable, located near essential services and schools, close to public transit, and ultimately provides a healthy, safe, and secure place for families to thrive. We recommend that the county and cities work together to create a farmworker housing overlay, assess all viable locations for farmworker housing, and to identify ideal and viable locations, particularly promoting housing that meets the needs of long-term resident workers and their families. We would also urge the county to avoid locations with very high exposure to pesticides or other hazards, and to consider the health risks of families by using farmworker housing as the buffer between schools and fields. Let's see. We also, on April ninth, we co-hosted the public workshop addressing the legalities and practical implementation possibilities for SB 1000. We also submitted a compilation of the comments that we had from the public for that. But in accordance with SB 1000, the county must specifically address environmental justice. And we must identify communities that are currently bearing an excessive burden of environmental and socioeconomic risk factors. So, we'd like to suggest that the county work with cities to develop a regional map that identifies environmentally burdened disadvantaged communities, similar to CAL EnviroScreen, which would allow for more layered localized analysis. This could include areas where facilities on county unincorporated land impact disadvantaged populations within cities, such as in the industrial areas along the north Ventura Avenue, or on the outskirts of Santa Paula, or unincorporated areas in El Rio, Saticoy, and Pyro. We'd like to ensure that community access to and participation in planning processes that will ultimately determine the security of their health and well-being. Hearing directly from communities affected most by these disproportionate burdens will be essential in understanding systemic problems and developing solutions. We suggest formal partnering with local nonprofits, community organizations, and advocates who work within these communities every day as a way of fostering this engagement. And we thank you for the opportunity to comment on planning equally for all of our vibrant communities.
Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you submitted that?
Jennifer.
Did you submit that letter already?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, and then Russell Sidney, and then Kitty Merrill.
I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I'm Ron Whitehurst with RINCON Vitova and Sectors and Ventura County Climate Hub. And we must set carbon sequestration goals, to pull carbon dioxide from the air where it's a pollutant, and hold it in the life in the soil, where it forms a sponge, to hold water and grow healthy plants. These must be science-based goals, not goals based on negotiations with industries that want to continue to pollute the air, and industrial agriculture that wants to mine the soil organic matter by using fertilizer and tillage. The goal of 1.5 degrees C temperature rise is not survivable for the half-million people who die annually from superstorms, floods, droughts, and climate exacerbated strife. To draw down carbon and grow plants, we need the rain that falls to the ground to soak in and support life. We can shape the soil into swells to slow, spread, and sink the water. These can be many, many small-scale, cheap projects, not large projects like dams and things like that. We can spread compost on the soil and kick-start the biology to hold more carbon, as they've demonstrated in Marin. To preserve the life in the soil, we need to stop using salt fertilizers and synthetic herbicides. Once we establish the small water cycles, more rain will fall, as has been demonstrated in other parts of the world. We can grow rain. With more rain, the temperature will be more moderate and reduce the heat effect island in cities. We can grow water and be self-sufficient with our own water. We don't need to rely on the political whims in Sacramento for state water supply. We can grow our ecology and improve our agriculture. We have the tools to do this. We just need your leadership and the unified action of the grassroots. I urge you to consider the green elements of the. I urge you to consider the green elements of the general plan. And I agree with some of the prior speakers that we need to produce more of our own energy also, but from clean wind, wave, and solar sources, energy that doesn't turn around and bite us in the assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell, Kitty, and then Donna Lacayo. I think it's Donna.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Supervisors, and Planning Commission. I'm really impressed by what has gone on up to this point with planning for the 2040 Plan. I'm also acutely aware that this is a unique time in the world, and so this plan has a lot riding on it. We are at a point where climate change is starting to manifest itself. We're at a point where new technologies are coming, and we're talking about autonomous vehicles. There's a lot that has to be integrated in what we're planning for, for the next 20-odd years. That said, it's going to be the job of this plan to be extremely agile and to be open to the different ways that the climate is changing, that technology is changing, and that new avenues are opening up to us to sequester carbon, to clean the air, to grow water. We need to make sure that these elements are in the plan. I'm very encouraged to notice that, you know, environmental justice is mentioned, that climate change is mentioned, but we need to be looking at it from a proactive standpoint, not a reactive one. As Ron Whitehurst mentioned, you know, there is science coming up, and maybe we can't do it all now, but we need to put the plan in place so that as technologies advance, we are poised to be ready for them. It takes small individuals working on this. It takes corporations, and it takes a county to make it all come together. So, to close, I'd invite you to come to a Ventura College's Climate Action Summit. That's going to be this next Tuesday at 6:30 at the Applied Science Building. We will be talking about solving climate change by every means necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we got messed up there. Is Russell not out here? No? Okay.
Is that Russell?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, you're up, young lady.
Good afternoon, Chairman Foye, Supervisors, Commissioners, Board members, staff. My name is Donna Lacayo, and I'm with the Port of Waynimi. I have been part of the focus group meetings for transportation and economic development, and I commend staff for their wonderful organization and the way they conducted those meetings. I was asked by our CEO and Port Director to date to comment on a specific part of the guiding principles in the vision statement of Ventura County's general plan update, specifically to the economic vitality part of it. I believe that this is up on the agenda to date for a vote, so I wanted to make a comment on it. It says currently, "Foster economic and job growth that is responsible, responsive to the evolving needs and opportunities of the county's economy, and preserves land-use compatibility with Navy Base Ventura County," while enhancing our quality of life and promoting environmental sustainability. Great. I would like to request that as a shared harbor with the Navy Base Ventura County, deport is added to this language. As an economic engine of Ventura County, we would like for you to consider a few facts in order to do so. We were named an opportunity zone by the governors under the new tax policy recently. We support over 13,000 jobs in the county that are trade-related jobs. We are responsible for $96 million in local tax benefit annually to the community, in addition to $1.5 billion in economic impact. We were voted the greenest port in the U.S. last year, and we have a great history of joint use of the harbor with the Navy Base Ventura County. So we ask that this comment is taken well, and that change is updated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Leslie Purcell. And that's our last speaker, unless there's anybody else out there that would like to
Good afternoon, Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. I just had a couple of things. I've been working lately with the California Native Plant Society, Channel Islands branch, and we would like to support native plants as part of this plan. And I haven't really seen it mentioned too much heretofore. Could be included in the open space element. And also, in terms of water conservation, native plants are very good at existing without too much water, so this is something to think about. They're very good for habitat value and for our birds and bees and butterflies and pollinators that we really need for agriculture as well. I'd also like to just speak momentarily about the oil industry. Well, just the fact that we've got all these permits, conditional use permits, that are very old and apparently sort of go on in perpetuity without much environmental review. And this is really a concern to many people, that I believe now there are 79 new wells being proposed in the Oxnard-Camarillo area. I guess it's actually county. And apparently, they don't need to do SEQA or environmental review. Now, 79 wells is a huge amount. And there will be infrastructure issues, and air quality, and also water, as well as just the fact of pumping and injecting whatever they're going to inject. So I think that, I don't know if this can be addressed as part of the general plan update, but there needs to be a way to curtail or somehow actually renew these kinds of permits and not just ministerially advance them and allow what are huge cumulative impacts that would last on and on into the future and impact many people, both the agriculture people, the farm fields, and also residents here in Ventura. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Appreciate that. I think that was our last speaker, so we're going to close the public comment. Is anybody else out there? No? Guess not. All right. So Supervisor, do you have a comment? Supervisor Park?
I had meant to ask Bruce Smith a question based on something he wrote and sent to us, which was about the need for alternative concept report.
Do you want to bring him back?
Yeah.
Bruce?
Just a brief minute, or if you can.
And just that you didn't mention that in your points, but you did have a point, and I wonder if you could express it.
Well, first of all, I wrote my comments before the staff report was out, or before the alternatives concept report was out, so I had no clue as to what was being recommended by staff. And they were basically soliciting public comments. So these were my public comments. In essence, my conclusion was that, based on the background report, there was not a compelling argument to change the existing land use policies or overall scheme. There may be for adjustments here and there, but fundamentally, it seemed okay, other than the SCAG projections. And you already know my opinions regarding the SCAG projections. So, that is simply really a recommendation of where I saw it to be. Not that you can't do alternatives, but remember that the alternatives are really to address significant adverse impacts, but also in the context of a programmatic EIR, as to evaluate any alternatives that your board feels is appropriate. So that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. I'm sure somebody probably has a PowerPoint or something up here, but anybody have a comment from Supervisors?
Did you want to do the Planning Commission and let them go first?
Yeah, I guess you're going to, you want to, okay, we'll go. Who's the chair?
I'd also, okay, that's good.
Richard? You're going to do yours after, or what? You want to do yours first? Hang on a second, one second.
I guess I have, I just have a process question. I mean, at 4:20, we have a ton of stuff we have to do. I mean, if you just look at page 10 and 11 of the board letter, there are 10 questions that we're supposed to give direction on. That's at the end of everything else that we do, right? In terms of doing that. So, I do have some general thoughts that might influence the Planning Commission's thinking, so I don't want to let the Planning Commission go all the way through and then, so I probably should save those things. But it's mostly to inform the Planning Commissioners as they have their conversation.
Okay.
I think it'll only take about 50 or 60 minutes.
Okay. I'm getting a bunch of texts here, thinking at 7:30 to 9:30 we'll be done, so it's fine. Okay, we're good.
And then I would expect that there would be input from the Board of Supervisors on what Supervisor Bennett says, so then we'll have that discussion, then the Planning Commission, and then back to the Board of Supervisors.
I really don't know where to begin, so.
Mr. Chair?
I agree.
I also have some comments on the 5th District, if, you know, in order to expedite things, you know, some of the concerns that I have for the 5th District. I know we want to talk about specifics, but I do have.
I don't want, you know, because we're going to have a time with the Board of Supervisors. He just has something he wants to have some over a bigger general. And then we can talk about our things, and then let the Planning Commission do.
Could I suggest just one thing? That is, since I'm taking a crack at just every Supervisor getting a crack to kind of give their overview of anything they want to say, so the Planning Commissioners have that. That way, if Supervisor Zargos has something specific, he wants to make sure they take into consideration he gets it said. If you don't have anything, that's fine. And then let the Planning Commissioners have that.
Whatever, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Just keep yours down to two minutes.
All right. Great. So I do have a PowerPoint, and it might help if I use it. So, if you'll load up. There you go. You say click it? Oh, that's switching, yeah. So I'll just start talking to save time, and that is, you know, ask me what I think the vision should be in the county. I think it's not a surprise, it's what everybody says when they go to these things, that we ought to do the development in the existing urban areas, and we ought to protect the agriculture in open space areas that are outside. Not great. The question is, how do you do that, and what else do you do besides doing that? I actually think that question has been pretty firmly resolved by two sore votes, saying that's what the public wants. And we don't have a whole lot of people coming in here saying, "We really need to start putting subdivisions all over the Oxnard Plain." So, that's settled. What's the second most important thing to me? The second most important thing is workforce housing. We have a crisis in terms of workforce housing, and we have to do something about it. Problem is, we're not a city. And that's, you know, we're trying to make sure that most of the economic development and urbanization takes place in the existing urban areas, which means that's where I think that should go. And basically, we're not going to solve the workforce housing crisis in Ventura County by how much workforce housing we build in the unincorporated area. Doesn't mean we shouldn't do some, doesn't mean we shouldn't do our share, but that's not, that's not, for me, that's not the focus of the general plan of Ventura County. It would really be to support getting good workforce housing done in the cities. And I'm really glad that Supervisor Foye and I, we think alike so much, that I was going to use the exact example, and that is, you know, when you look back at the cities back in the 1960s and 70s, what were they doing? What was the city of Ventura doing in the 1970s and 80s? They were blowing out onto the agricultural land out the east end. You know, they were marching towards Santa Paula, and it was like a whole speculative game. Who could develop the next parcel, the next parcel? Who could get approval? People were making their money doing that. Meanwhile, what was happening in downtown Ventura? Thrift stores, closed shops, a decaying downtown. So you had the nuttiest thing, which is why SOAR got so supported, you had decaying inner cities, and you had expansion out into the agricultural areas. Well, we don't want to make that same mistake at the unincorporated area. We don't want to have the unincorporated area suddenly be where we try to solve all of these problems, workforce housing, all of this other kind of stuff, and watch cities that will, because of changes, be able to handle a significant change in sort of their housing, and that is shopping centers. I was going to use that very example. I mean, you've got retail outlets like crazy that are being converted in other places to apartments and everything else. We want to try to support that. And so, that's my big vision, if I had to give that. I want to avoid the decay and overlook problems that cities are having, because that's, there is, we have 10 cities, we have an awful lot that could get done in terms of workforce housing. So, the next thing I would do here, so that's, most workforce housing should be in existing cities, I know the concept I just said. Second thing, we need to include ADUs and farmworker dwellings. If I had to pick what we should focus on of anything, it should be farmworker housing in the unincorporated area and additional dwelling units on existing developed properties, because that's how you get the best chance of having that low-cost, affordable workforce housing. You're not creating a lot of new infrastructure. You're going to do that, and I think that the world is going to be very different five years from now in terms of people's interest in putting additional dwelling units on their property. And the reason is because, you know, it takes a little while for this change to hit, but a lot of people don't even know it's ministerial now. But it is ministerial. And as people start to find out, their neighbors are starting to make money off of doing this, they're going to be doing these ministerial things. And I think we have a chance for quite a bit of this to happen. And so, as, I want to encourage our professionals who were hiring, who do a great job and got grilled by us this morning, and that's the nature of the business, and I know you know, and our professionals there, want to encourage them to try to think and find out, what is that right proactive, prescriptive kind of thinking about how much can ADUs work for us? Because they solve a lot of problems, they're more, the most likely way for us to get the workforce housing that we need. The SOAR guidelines, well, it's not even that important. In the interest of time, I'll go on. That was more a semantic thing. SOAR guidelines, I think, should be baselines more than, you should view them as constraints. It's just how we are. But anyway, it's a, if development potential, but this is on the Board of Supervisors' letter, on page 7, down at the bottom, I think this is really the rub. Out of everything that we're going to do today, this is the biggest question, right? And that is, staff is, and the professionals are going to go through, and as they said, they're going to try to figure out what is our development potential. And if the development potential is greater than the expected demand, then limited land use changes may be warranted. You don't have to do very much, because, in other words, if the calculations are, and that's what staff is asking for some input on in terms of how to do that, if we had to, I don't know that we're going to get to the 10 questions on page 10 and 11 of the board letter, but we ought to get as far as we can on this question, all right? Because this is the other thing, it says in the staff report, on the board letter, page 7, says if development potential is greater, you don't have to make very many land use changes, but it says this, "If the development potential is less than the expected demand, then additional opportunities for growth will be evaluated and proposed in the alternatives report." More land would have to, you'd have to find some way to accommodate that growth. So how you calculate development potential is really important, and how you calculate expected demand, which is not a surprise that we are all asking you a lot of questions about expected demand, and what number are you using? If you're using a number 50% higher, that's potentially 50% more land that might have to be rezoned. So, I offer that for the Planning Commission's thing, but I would hope that we would, like with ADUs, I would hope that we would be appropriately optimistic about development potential. Because I think the reality is, the other reality that I didn't get to mention yet is, land costs a lot more in Ventura County now than it did back in 1970. And, you know, 1970, the development pattern of Ventura County had, was to a great extent established then. People built homes on bigger lots, because you could afford to buy that lot and do that. It's going to be not very likely that very many workforce kind of people are going to be trying to buy, oh, we want a nice home, and we want it on a big lot. That idea of the big suburban lot is not the housing that we need, that we're going to be encouraging in the future. If we're going to encourage housing, it should be workforce housing, small, something you can keep affordable. That means more housing can take place, and more likely you'd get ADUs. I'm going as fast as I can, Supervisor Foye. So, before this all started, when I created this yesterday, right? Before this all started, when I created this yesterday, I was saying, I think the three ought to be, the existing general plan, because we could just say we want to do the existing general plan, which would mean we would accept the 800-per-year kind of growth plan, which was in the existing one, the historic growth rates, which is 540, I think, that came up, or SCAG's growth projections, 680. 680, 580, we're not talking about, you know, some massive paving over Ventura County between the difference. But that's what I, but I'm open on this, if somebody has some better idea about what we should do with the alternatives. I don't, I don't think I put very much stock in the existing general plan, growth plan. I think it's between the historic growth rate and the SCAG growth projections, it's somewhere in between there that I would settle, or I would settle at the historic growth rates. Finally, and I'm sorry, this is a little wordy here, any alternatives beyond those three should await the Any alternatives beyond those three should await the results of the development potential analysis. And I know that might mean a step coming back here if you, if you, but I don't want to start us down that road about a whole lot of things that we might do if the development potential analysis says we need it until we know we need it, right? The development potential analysis should not use current average development that reflects development intensities of the sixties and seventies when land cost was, was, was low. So that's the point that I've already made here. We should be, I hope our professionals will be more, more insightful than that. And then instead, staff should estimate likely future development intensities based on current market conditions and incentives. For example, we say farmworker housing only needs ministerial permit. We haven't solved all those problems yet, but we've got to do that. And I'm willing to look at how do we make changes to get more farmworker housing? That's one of the things that I would do in the unincorporated area in terms of that. And if staff needs to come back to us with that final bullet point, in other words, come up with an estimate and say they want to check with us, that's fine. Or if they feel like they've got something good and they want to go until July, I'm, I'm, I'm open to, to kind of consider that. And then so, under evaluation, revise the first criterion to read. It, it says promote land use efficiency. And I would suggest adding assure consistency with SOAR and the Guidelines for Early Development because they are the baseline. It's just done. So put it in there. Don't just say promote land use efficiency. Say promote land use efficiency, assuring that it's consistent with SOAR and the Guidelines for Early Development. And then the other topics, you know, how should we address and, and adopt a global warming? I think the, the fundamental question of the day, that fifty years from now, people look back and they'll say, what were you doing about global warming? Absolutely, I think the, many of the, the things we heard today, we definitely want to make sure that we do this. And it is the overarching, overarching, it's overachieving question. It's the overarching question of our time, right? And I would encourage that on the business incubators and new industries, same thing. They, they belong in cities. We ought to mention that. Doesn't mean that everything has to be that way, but that's where we ought to try to focus them. Thank you very much. I really appreciate having a chance. It's an important topic to get all that stuff said.
You went four minutes over time, but.
Hubert Humphrey couldn't have spoken faster than that.
Mr. Supervisor.
I, I was going to share what Supervisor mentioned, but I, I'd like to go a little specific for maybe for the Planning Commission to take into consideration in the future. You know, the, the housing is in really critical need here in Ventura County, all types of housing for that matter. But I'm just going to talk a little bit about the Fifth District, which is El Rio, Nylund Acres. Affordable housing is needed there for low and middle income. Rental projects are really needed there tremendously. Farmworker housing, as you mentioned, Supervisor Bennett. And also, you know, we're now adding the ADU ordinance. That's really helpful. But the problem that we have there in El Rio is water, the water pressure. And I think it's extremely important that we work on the water pressure. We have quite a few small water mutual companies that are struggling to meet the needs of, of the community there. So consequently, some of the individuals there in El Rio cannot build their homes or add to their, to their homes because of the water pressure. So one of the things that I like to see is to probably work with those, those mutials to consolidate them, to kind of work with them so we can increase the water pressure so that, that the, it becomes a health and safety issue. And also, it's, it's a hindrance to the, to the ADUs. This, we also need those that are really extremely important for El Rio. And also, I just want to add that in El Rio, then this is for future thinking, is that we need sidewalks and we need all kinds of bike and safety issues for, for the, for our families there. So families can walk, we need sidewalks. And I know Supervisor Parks really talks about this. Sidewalks. What are you laughing because of? Anyway, so.
We're all coughing about that one.
Sidewalks we need and also bus stops and so that neighbors can walk to their, to their, to their facilities for exercise and so forth. That's a future thing that we need to, to look at. Street lighting, I think, is, is important also for, for safety. Transportation is really important. We need to work with our transit agencies to make sure that we have adequate transportation. And I know going specifics, but I'm almost done. My three minutes are almost up. And also, I, I think recreation is extremely important. In, for example, in Nylund Acres, we have three thousand people, three thousand residents without a park. I mean, zero parks, but that's, that's a mortal sin. The only thing that we have there is, is a Nylund Acres Recreation Center, which is used by the Boys and Girls Club. We need to come out with some way to build parks, you know, for our individuals in Nylund Acres and also in El Rio. El Rio doesn't have any parks either. One of the things that we're working now is working with the school districts. But at five o'clock or three o'clock, they close the gates and the families cannot go out there, enjoy the, the park or go out there with their families to, to really help in, in the exercising and also with the community and family needs. And I think that all these items are really important. I know they're specific items, but it's something when the Planning Commission, issue, when this issue goes to the Planning Commission, you can understand the need that we need in, in El Rio, Nylund Acres. Thank you.
Supervisor, you have.
Three minutes.
I do.
Very good.
I just, I have a quick little PowerPoint.
Oh, another PowerPoint.
That can be put up.
Boy, I'm feeling left out now.
I, I look at the vision statement and I, I know we are, it's part of us to approve it again. And I just wanted to point out that while it does incorporate like everybody's opinion, it just doesn't, it's not smooth reading. It's not easy to understand when I think of the vision of, of our county. I, I think we could incorporate the ideas of this, but maybe the CEO's office could come back and make it a little bit clearer, give it some clarity. And that, that would be my recommendation. And I, I won't bother reading it to you because your eyes will glaze over. And then just in regards to how I see what makes our county special is we've got these Guidelines for Early Development, which have been protected by SOAR, which say you protect farmland and open space. And that makes us more different than any other county in the, at least Southern California. We don't develop, you know, we don't have the Targets and the Walmarts in the middle of our unincorporated area. That makes us really special. And it makes us special now. It's really going to make us special in fifty years or at least to twenty forty if we keep those same principles. So to me, the goal is to keep the buffers between the cities and preserve open space and agriculture. And we do have to accommodate growth, you know? So that's the trick. Let's see if I can work, next slide. So how do you accommodate growth in keeping in those boundaries? We already have a lot of things in place. And if we did something, if our general plan said, how are we going to maintain this Guidelines for Early Development? What can we do? What tools are there that we can use? I would just throw out, we have these tools out there and we should incentivize, you know, to see that we, you know, that's what a great plan can do. It could incentivize so we can keep the qualities that we think are special in our county. And we have the Guidelines for Early Development. Green Belt implementation, that's another aspect. We had the discussion about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. We work with FECOG so we can negotiate to see that the development, the housing can go into the cities. We do tax sharing agreements because we don't build in the unincorporated area. We don't get the sales tax. So we have those agreements in place. We, as a board, have put money aside for farmworker housing, homeless. Supervisor Bennett refers to workforce housing. We put money to be built in the cities. We have the Right to Farm ordinance. And I agree, that's something that could easily and should be put into our general plan because it reinforces the idea that you can farm and that farmers aren't going to be put out of business. Same thing goes with protecting large agricultural acreage. Water policy to grow within our means, you know? I mean, the kind of developments that we're having out there when we don't have water is a really key point. And we want to make sure that we ag is viable. So what can we do to incentivize so that we have water available in the unincorporated area for farmland, for what we have? And then obviously, we have SOAR as another way to accommodate that. And carbon sequestration, the whole efforts that we're doing with, with, with climate change. So we have things in place. I would love to see what incentives we can use to continue it, to make our county special, which is the vision. And as I earlier quoted, you know, it states in the background report, and I thought, oh, my gosh, we spent all this money and time putting together a background report. I'm certainly thinking that's the information that we're going to be used to put together what our general plan's going to have in it and, and how we're going to implement our general plan. We do it based on the background information. And it does state specifically, there appears to be sufficient supply of land with residential development potential to accommodate the population growth through 2040. So it doesn't mean we have to go out and rezone a bunch of land to try to meet these because we have it. And it's just a question of, you know, do you think it's what we have? They're saying it might not be likely. Well, they're basing ADU information prior to we had the law on ADUs, accessory dwelling units. It talks about Cal State Channel Islands should be six hundred, not two hundred and forty-two units. But that's the amount of, of development potential that we have out there. So I don't think Supervisor Bennett was saying it's not really a concern. I, I don't see it as to which number we're using. We have ample, just like the background report states. And just a comment with farmworker housing, I really did appreciate the comment from Cause. You don't want to be putting farmworker housing as the buffer, you know, between the farmland and, and other residential properties, you know, that, that, those are residential properties. So we want to make sure we're not using them as a buffer from, from pesticides, from the schools, for example. So that's just a, you know, a comment regarding that. But we do have the ability. If we wanted to make the statement, how do we keep this county special? And we need to have some good policies in place. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one last comment. I got, I went two minutes and thirty seconds. I just want to make sure that staff, you know, incorporates my comments today in, in the general plan. But it's one more specific. Thank you.
All right. That sounds good. Supervisor Long, you don't want to do a PowerPoint?
No, in fact, I, I took this as more as to what, what ideas and ideology that we want to look into, not the exact focus point.
Yes.
So I pardon if, if that was, the intent was the focus versus looking at. I, I think what we should be looking at is not saying that our housing, what we're doing currently is working. I think we should be looking at it as lessons learned. And we've heard from farmworkers in our focus groups of how the, what their issues are. And I think we should be listening to them. I've heard that, but I haven't seen it. And, and part of that is permitting processes. I think we need to be looking at the permitting processes. And you think we need to be looking at the, not just the farmworker housing, but workforce housing. We are now a service industry. Our economy has been going down and down. We get notices all the time about companies leaving. So what are we doing to keep them here? And how are we implementing the general plan for that? I agree with the vitality, economic vitality plan to be incorporated into this. I do not believe that one, one job source is worse than another. I think it all creates what we have in Ventura County. I think we should be looking at different ways. Say, for example, of energy, we're looking at different ways for how do we get electricity? We have gas. We have all sorts of different ways. We need to have a diversified portfolio. I don't think we're going to get it all or nothing. You know, I don't think that solar can make my cellphone. But we have to figure this out for the best of our population. When we talk about water, we should be talking about water as a whole, not only one district or one part of the county. We should be looking at diversity as to how do we best bring water, water quality for our agriculture? We, we want our historic, solid historic agriculture not to leave. And we also want good quality water for the people that live here. To state that we have to boil water shouldn't be our goal. We should be providing excellent water quality for it. As we go into climate change, I understand the different ideologies of climate change. We need good air. We need good water. How do we get there? We also need to look at our transportation. If we have the port and we're supporting the port, how can we utilize the rail more for heavy traffic? So we get those big trucks off, off the freeway. Those are possibilities. How do we do that? And then processing. I think that's, as we look at agriculture trends, I think we should look at processing. I understand with SOAR, there's only a very small portion that can go into processing. But what can we do? We have all visited certain farms that would love to do processing for their, their farm and actually get ag tourism there. How do we get to support our, our farmers so that they can stay here? And then we also know the transportation goes with our workforce. No matter how many bike lanes we, we put in, if a person has to drive thirty minutes to work every day, they're not going to ride their bike. So how do we get our companies to be closer to the houses? And what we say is one thing, but what we do is another. So I would like to look at what, what processes do we do to, to help that? So I think permitting that will help, but also mixed use. Maybe it's, it's the shopping malls that are going down. What, what is it that we can do? I, I really would like to look at this more out of the box to be successful. We have our rules and regulations that are in place, but to, we have an older population, right? We're, we're having it more service industry, so it's lower paying. So we, I think we need to look at those items and see how we best can present ideas for our community. So I would like us to look into things. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's an opportunity for Planning Commission to do their thing. Sir?
Okay. We've got, we've heard public comment. Public's closed now. We certainly heard the board's thoughts on it. The recommendation of staff, and if, if I understand County Council correctly, is the Planning Commission is asked to, to vote on recommendations two through eight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Provide input and direction.
Exactly. To provide input and direction. Extensive input and direction. And I won't go through trying to read them. I think we, we all have them in front of us and know what, what's being asked of us. Have any comments before we, we move on to this?
Yes, Richard. Well, I know that none of us on the Planning Commission probably have PowerPoint presentations and detailed, detailed recommendations for revisions to what's been presented to us. I want to throw out the idea that we hold off our vote until the, the Board of Supervisors adopts something and then put it up for an up or down vote by the Commission afterwards. Just a thought.
Nora?
I wanted to share a couple of thoughts. Thank you very much for coming out and sharing your points of view. It's, we're not good guys, bad guys, the guys who are right, the guys who are wrong. There are arguments to be made on both sides of policy questions. And what's going to have to have happen is our choices. Because I was thinking about the Overton Window. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But it's, it's a series of ways of thinking about creating policy that goes from, from the unthinkable to the radical, to the sensible, to the popular. And it comes from both sides. It comes, and think about it, you know, whether you think left or right, whether you think oil and gas versus carbon sequestration. You go from the unthinkable, the radical, acceptable, sensible, popular, and then policy. So we need to not so much think about what is popular. I find a, I find it really hard to extrapolate policy direction from groups that the sample size is fourteen people. You know, it's just, it's, it's useful to think about. There were things that were gleaned from those meetings that, that perhaps we wouldn't have come up with ourselves. But I don't think that going by what's most popular is necessarily the right way to go. But to Supervisor Bennett's statement at the very beginning of this, why wasn't open space one of those things? And it was like parsed out into parks and recreation, protecting biological resources and scenic resources. And if you go back to that slide, the combined focus group evaluation criteria, and you add up those numbers, it's forty-eight plus forty plus twenty-five, one hundred and thirteen, by far outstripping the, the things regarding planning for water demand, promoting affordable workforce housing, the number one thing overall. The number one thing overall was protecting open space. Those are the green belts in between the cities. Those are directing development toward the city and conserving lands, whether they be in agriculture production, oil production, and other open space uses, and natural open space for recreation. So I thought that was the most important charge for the county, is to maintain that focus and that conservation. I thought that Phil White's point regarding the range and not just focusing on the max for assessing our housing needs was a point very well taken. There were questions regarding water quality as well as quantity, and I know that Commissioner Anstott has a lot to offer on how we do that. I wanted to ask Council if the Williamson Act is open to open space. Is that something that we can look at? I thought that that would perhaps be something that we could adopt. I support adding the port. And those are my, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Anstott?
Well, Supervisor Bennett stole most of my thunder because I agree with him about 100%. The things that bother me most about these projections, and I particularly liked his idea of let's get the numbers straight before we jump off, and whatever that means or however long it takes, I think that's the appropriate action to take. I honestly believe that the accessory housing, both in the county and the city, will take up most of the situation. I'm a farmer. I have a couple of small parcels. I have several friends who farm or are sort of marginal. They would all like to put something on their property that would save their farm, and quite frankly, a rental property or farmworker housing is an economic incentive. And it's something people will do because they have no land costs. We've already got it paid for. And the biggest component around here seemingly is available land. I honestly think that as the public becomes aware of what the county has done in terms of streamlining permits and greenlighting several housing questions, or choices of various size, that that may in and of itself solve our problem. And certainly, what's going to happen in the cities may well do that, too. It scares me when you lift parking requirements, setback requirements, and other things, but I would think that landlords would be most interested in adding additional units. And they, too, have already made their land costs. And I think, honestly think we'll get there just with the ADUs. And I know people who farm, like I do, will be encouraged to build, whether it's farmworker housing or rental units. And a lot of us have some marginal land, which we're not in production anyway, which is available. And we already have most of the utilities, and we'll be on septic. So I just see that as a significant development. The other, and I agree with everybody about open space, and that's what makes our county special. The other thing is water, water, water. Without it, we have nothing. And it's, I was a water lawyer for 30 or 40 years, and I don't see enough of anything happening. We could spend hours talking about it, but we need to get together with all the stakeholders. This has, you know, I know Supervisor Bennett's familiar with what's going on in Ojai and the problems at Casitas, and it's just being magnified everywhere. And unless we get rain, which is problematic at best after five years, we are going to have to get state water or D-Saw. There's no other two ways about it. And we need to get about doing it now. And the communities, cities, if necessary, and the county need to get together, or we're going nowhere. There won't be development without water. I look around and see municipalities are building right and left, and they don't have the water. I know they don't have the water. They can say they have the water, but they don't. And it's just a liability. We're fooling ourselves unless we solve the water problem. So I guess everything has been said. I think the supervisors have got a handle on all this, what needs to be done, and I think the direction to our professionals is good and solid. Like I said, the only problem I really have is questioning these numbers, SCAG numbers. I just don't think they're right. If you look at the demographic report, you see that younger people are leaving the county right and left. So, I mean, I question using statistics based on what's gone before, which ignores what's happening now. Anyway, that's sort of it. I'm through. I think you wound up.
Thank you. Commissioner Kessner.
I, too, want to thank everyone for coming out today and sharing your thoughts and giving us an opportunity to hear your feelings about the county and what it's going to look like going forward. And I'm not going to go into a whole, long, detailed session. I just want to say I concur with a lot of things that Supervisor Long said. And I'm going to stick with where I kind of have expertise, and that's in the economic development aspect of things. I think we have to be careful about where and how we look at land and changes of land use. We need to preserve what is there for our industrial manufacturing businesses. We do need to make the way for oil and gas industries to be able to work with the issues of climate change and all of that. I think we do need to do some retail revitalization. In some of the studying that I've done and some of the reports I've read from ICSC and from mall owners like Westfield, there is actually an uptick in retail, and you'd be amazed. It's millennials who are going old school, and they want to go to brick and mortar. So I think retail landowners may have to really take a hard look at the retail mix that they have and make it more conducive for people to go there. I think we need to make sure we create jobs. Jobs are necessary for people to live in a county and support that county. And I'm going to stick with that because that's what I, that's my kind of area of expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got history in the county. I was born and raised here. The majority of my time was in the 5th District. Spent a bit of time on Camrio for a couple of years, but aside from that, I've resided in the 5th District in some capacity. I'm real sensitive to the issues of economics development and the vibrance of having an economy that supports, that's supported locally. My grandparents came here in the 30s, pursuing a better life, and ag was the venue to that. I've experienced it. There's a real benefit. There's a self-worth. There is a value to it. There is a respect that goes with it. There's a need that goes with ag and the ag population, the ag forces that we have, that we tend to overlook sometimes. I see, I see a real need for, obviously, affordable housing. Affordable housing for the workforce, but we get specific. We're also need to talk about farmworker housing. The situation now with farmworker housing is basically nonexistent unless we have somebody coming forward. And one that comes to mind is Cabrera Economic Development, that's done what is done in the county in partnership with this, with this board here. They've done some good things, and I'm assuming they will continue to do good things, but we need to find those parcels available that they might be able to look at for development. I'm familiar with what the City of Moore Park did because I was out there for three years with the Sheriff's Department. And they had a, I think it was also Cabrera Economic Development, they had a sweat equity program set up where the actual residents of the property that was going to be purchased, physically put efforts into it to construct the homes. And again, that was in partnership with the City of Moore Park, obviously. But there are those opportunities. But the wider scope, obviously, you need to have affordable housing. And I concur with what Commissioner Anstott says. We've got a migration, we've had a migration for some time of young adults having to leave the county because they can't afford to live here, buy a house here, maybe even pay the rent here. And so we, you know, we've got a conundrum in that, you know, we value the county and the property, and we don't want to see it develop like some counties to the south of us. But that drives prices up, land prices up. At the same time, we're trying to maintain the vibrant ag community and the open spaces that we have. I completely stand behind everything SOAR is trying to do and was put in place to do. But as my fellow Commissioner Anstott says, water is at the core of everything. We've had things come in front of this Planning Commission, and the Santa Coa area plan update comes to mind. And there were parcels we identified and signed off on for development, for residential development. But we can't get water. They can't get water because they need a will-serv letter, and the City of Anturo's not issuing anything outside the city. And I don't know all the details of the water as far as Santa Coa area, but I'm assuming that's the, that would be the primary source of any development. I know there's other water companies out there, El Rio, Alta Mutual, and a couple others. I think there should be some consolidation in those areas, whether it's to get water pressure up or just to economy of scale in some fashion. Climate change is here. It's, you know, you've got to have your head in the sand not to recognize it's here. And we have to do whatever we can possible to cut that down, whether it's less truck trips in and out, whether it's building houses closer to transportation. We need to stay cognizant of that in this, as we go forward with this. I heard comment once or twice this afternoon about right to farm for ag. I don't know if that's an ordinance situation. I know it's obviously a desire. I also concur that the Port of Huaynemi ought to be factored into this economic plan. There's a lot of jobs and a lot of transportation, a lot of developments going on there, much more than we ever realized was going on. You have to, I think, go and take a tour of the thing, and I haven't done that. But I certainly stay attuned to what's going on in the general area where I live, and the Port of Huaynemi is huge in what it does. There was a comment by one of the speakers, commented about oil and development and petroleum, and I think we agree that there has to be, you know, we have to do what we have, what we can do to keep that viable occupation economy, because that's part of the economic engine in this county. But I did, I did pick up on the comment that we seem to be, we seem to be grandfathering in for renewal CUPs that have been in existence for 20, 30, 40 years in some cases. And things have happened, things have changed, environmentally have changed, obviously. If nothing else, the world is much more aware and sensitive what's going on on an environmental This country is producing more oil today, I read or heard the other day on radio, than they're producing 30 years ago. We're, you know, we're not importing as much as we were, we're actually exporting oil. And a good reason for that apparently has to do with fracking and discovery of fracking to extract oil from the ground. And that's, that's all well and good for the industry, but that brings up other environmental issues that we have to deal with. And therein is part of the conundrum of how we get these things done. Anyway, I, you know, those are the issues that I see, I feel strongly about. And those are the comments that I heard out there that I think need to be somehow addressed as we go forward. That's all I have.
Speakers, their time.
No, I just had a question, a clarification. I heard spoken that ADUs was the answer. I'm questioning, will ADUs supplement the farmworker housing, or do we also need the farmworker housing? Because I just wanted clarification.
I think ADUs, I don't believe ADUs will satisfy the need for farmworker housing. I think they can supplement farmworker housing. But I don't think, I don't think, I think they'll provide some affordable housing for people that obviously need it, and some of them may be farmworkers, but probably not.
Okay. So we still need both.
I was going to share that, too. I think it'll complement.
Okay.
ADUs will complement the farmworker housing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And that's what I'm trying to get across over El Rio, too.
Commissioner Dugas?
There was one bit of housekeeping regarding Hagel lumber, and I don't know if this is directed to County Council or to Planning. But if we decided to change as part of our general plan update their parcel to existing community, wouldn't that put our entire update up to a vote? How do you separate that out?
County Council?
Redesignating even one parcel, as you said, from AE to existing community wood or industrial, would require a SOAR vote. And so, I mean, it would depend what else the general plan update involved. If the update involved potential redesignation of other parcels, that would also require SOAR vote. And so it would, like I said, it would depend what the end product general plan update entailed. But what I can tell you is redesignating even one parcel requires a SOAR vote.
On the whole general plan or just on the, or just on that parcel?
I think it would depend on how everything was set up.
Well, I would just want it not to have the GPU subject to a public vote.
That would be fine.
I would offer you one thing on that. So we are, we'll be bringing back a lot more information than we have in August and September. The issue with a SOAR vote, which we're still exploring, is the general plan goals, policies, the programs are contained in the SOAR ordinance itself. So the board has directed us to do an agricultural element, and we really need to understand what boxes are going to be on that agricultural element, what new policies or programs or goals we'll be able to add that will not trigger a SOAR vote, right? So that's part of the exercise that's happening. So I believe that the two folks in front of us today are saying, perhaps if there is a SOAR vote triggered by any of that policy analysis or anything that happens in an agricultural element, then perhaps they would like to be added to that somehow. And so that's, that's the issue that we're exploring, not a single-issue SOAR vote.
If I could, it seems, just on Hagel specifically, I appreciate you bringing that up, and that is that SOAR also includes that if we change the general plan so that we now allow a more intensive use, that that requires a SOAR vote also. So conceptually, you could do that, but if you did that, you'd be putting the whole general plan up to a vote. And it seems to me, and I do know specifically, we went back and polled it, and I don't have it right here in front of me, but this Board of Supervisors, when we launched the general plan, we specifically said, we don't want this to be used for everybody to put their specific general plan changes in there. We said, that's just, that's not where we want to go. So my sense is, it's not likely you're going to find a way to do this where the Hagel property's going to get rezoned without a SOAR vote. And what I would encourage the Hagel people to do, they've done, like they said, they've done all the work on it, move it forward as a general plan amendment on your own, bring it to this board, do it fast. It can be put into the general plan if it gets approved, and you could be on the ballot in November, you know?
Approved by the voters.
Yeah, approved by the voters. You know, you could, you could put it on the ballot in November. This board, I can't guarantee till you see the devils in the details, but I don't think you find hostility. And I would go back to Thomas Aquinas. Thomas Aquinas was a change in Ojai. They needed to, they needed to make a change, a small land use change. The Board of Supervisors, after they processed a general plan amendment, they, you know, by the applicant, the Board of Supervisors... by the applicant, the Board of Supervisors on a 5-0 vote, put it on the board, put it on the ballot, nobody opposed it, and the item passed overwhelmingly by the voters. And I think that could easily be the scenario for Hagel. But I think that's more appropriate than trying to complicate the general plan amendment. That's where I stand right now. That's just one, one view on that. If I could, because I think I hear a lot of general agreement from everybody, and I really appreciate it, and I know there's some focus on, you know, people have different focuses on economic development, but I'm not hearing disagreement about the basic things that people want to see in the general plan, even though everybody knew it. So I'd like to take a stab at trying to answer these things because we could be here a long time, we take every one of them and try to go, okay, you guys voted this and this. I'd like to try a stab at it, and if you don't like it, please, everybody can speak up. So, but I need a question answered first by staff, and if it's, if the council has to do that, too. I know in general, we already adopted a policy that said we don't want to open up the area plans, the specific area plans, because, for a variety of reasons, but one of them being the time that it would take, and we want to make sure we get the general plan done. But we have a supervisor who I think I'm hearing wants to open up the area plan. We also have a community that has a lot of things they want to get done. He's sitting there talking about a whole lot of specific things that you wouldn't put into the general plan that you would put into an area plan. My question is, if we just picked one, the El Rio one, since there seems to be a lot of support for that from the supervisor, could we do the El Rio specific plan at the same time we did the general plan and still, and still stay on schedule? That's my question, and you may not be able to answer that today. If you can, I would, I would, I would say that I would offer, that would be great. If not, if we identified it as the first plan you're going to do afterwards, that's, that would be fine, too. The advantage I see is if you know what you're going to do with that specific plan, you may actually have some of the housing stuff that you need, want to get done. You may be able to get that done in the El Rio plan and all that, if they're receptive anyway. So, so Mike, so you need time to answer that question, or do you feel, is that a doable, is that a doable question to answer?
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. I think it would depend on the scope and scale of the ask, right? So if we're just narrowly talking about sidewalks, right, that could be a large issue, right? And water, right? And so those are, those are two big ticket items, right? We spent a couple of years just updating the Santa Coi area plan. So I think that one of the things that are going to be very important that comes out of this is that we do have a forward-facing-to-the-public implementation strategy of how we're going to update all of the area plans in the county. And there are some that are very old. The North Ventura Avenue plan is very old. We've also said all the way through this project, you know, we're going to try to avoid going in and updating, doing any sort of comprehensive update to an area plan because of the time and the budget and the constraints. We can probably do that on a, on a land use issue because maybe by September, we will actually know where we're at with all of our numbers. And we are doing a lot of work with SCAG. We're not just going to take their rein in numbers. We are, we're doing a lot of work with SCAG and the adjoining cities to make sure that we're all together on that. But I think that going in and doing one for, for these bigger issues will probably really tip the scale on us being able to move forward and have this delivered by 2020.
Okay, great. I mean, I think that what we've, what we've committed to is we want to get this done and, because it will take time for all of these area plans over time. So if, what I would, what I would suggest we do with that is that we park it out there, we give it to staff, and we say, if some, if for some reason in the next couple of months, staff says, hey, we actually think we could do it because the professionals say, hey, there's some clever way that you can do this or whatever, and they find that great. But we at least indicate we're receptive to it, but not at the cost of keeping the general plan from moving forward on time.
And that will really work, you know, because we need a lot of help in the area plan. If it can work, if it can play in, you know, it could be an opportunity for, for us to look at it.
And, and a thought would be, even if work began on it, but you couldn't get it done before we adopted the general plan?
Get the structure.
But that it would kind of fit the spirit of the thing, and that you're having some, maybe you have the preliminary outreach and those kind of things if there was staff and funding and all that available.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'd like to go to all of the things staff needs feedback from us on, and so that means go to the board letter. And first thing is, I, I know Supervisor Parks asked the CEO to rewrite the vision statement, so I'm sure he has it rewritten now. And, right, okay. As much as I appreciate that request, I just think you can, I just think we ought to accept the vision statement and guiding principles now so we can move forward.
Can we make an amendment to add the Port of Wayneemi with the Navy, Ventura, Navy base? It's on the economic vitality. So, the guiding principle, sorry. It's on economic vitality, so it'll say foster economic and job growth that is responsive to the evolving needs and opportunities of the county's economic and preserves land use compatibility with Navy Base Ventura County and Port of Wayneemi while enhancing our quality of life and promoting environmental sustainability.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Isn't the Port of Wayneemi in, in the city of Wayneemi? It's not, it's not a?
It is in the city.
Instead of the, I don't think it's incorporated. No?
I believe it is. It is a large portion of our economy for this county.
Well, I, no, I agree with that.
And it's a special district.
Well, it's, it's a Navy base that's the real big issue in that, I think, in terms of land use.
But no, I just, I support that, but I'm just wondering, I think it's in the city of Wayneemi. I'm just, uh.
Okay. Does anybody have a, does anybody have a, on the superintendent's point, I'm fine adding?
I don't care.
I would like to add that.
All right, okay. So I just, I'd like to start by just making the motion that we adopt the vision statement and guiding principles just to start to move the ball. Well, for the others, I won't go one at a time, but this one, we're supposed to do by ourselves and just get it started. And the others, I will run an option by and then have.
You can, you can run it. I mean, I've got a lot of problems with a lot of this stuff, so I probably wouldn't vote for it, but you guys don't go through.
Could we break up the vision statement from the guiding principles?
That's what he's, oh.
Well, how about this? I'll just drop the vision statement and guiding.
I'd like to read the vision statement to everyone so they know what you're voting on.
So we, we see why this is all a challenge, right? But I'm going to drop that right now, and not because, but then we can just bring that back. People who are ready, I'm not that ready to go into all the details. I knew it was, in my standpoint, it was good enough. But if you want to parse it, then let's stop and parse it. So we can, we can do that. So let me do the other stuff because I think I could potentially get through that, and that is, item two says, provide input and direction on the proposed structural changes presented in section two.
Thank you.
All right. The structural changes in, on the general plan organization of the Alternatives Concept Report, right? And the, of the Alternatives Concept, of the Alternatives Concept Report. Those structural changes, one of them is, I think, is to have an Alternatives Concept Report, correct? Is that not, not actually a structural change? Oh, oh, no, the structural changes were.
We are asking for the board's.
Tell us what you think it is.
We are asking for the board's nod that we can investigate restructuring the general plan as far as its table of contents, in other words, to go from a thematic to a element-based.
Exactly, but didn't one of those include an Alternatives Report?
That's for the Alternatives Report.
The Alternatives was restructuring.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I'm, I'm fine with that structural change in the table of contents. Does anybody?
Does anybody have a problem with the structural change piece?
Yeah, okay.
No, you guys are all good? Planning Commission, everybody's good?
So, all right, so if, if we could, and somehow this bounced off on me, let me get back to it.
Yes, I think too.
We're going to do all of them together except the vision statement.
Okay.
What are we doing, Steve?
We're going to the next item.
Three.
For some reason, my thing is frozen on me. Let me get, there we go. Thank you, Phil. All right. Then the Alternatives Concept Report. I want to, this is, this is the one concern that I have, is that as I read that, I walked in here going, I'm concerned we could be going all over the map with an Alternatives Concept Report and, and all of that. So I had, I had real hesitation when we kind of gave staff guidance saying, we know what we want in Ventura County. We're not, we said, we don't want to go out and say, everybody, hey, dream big, think of all the possible ways we could kind of do Ventura County. We've been fighting those battles here, and we have that basic concept. But quite frankly, listening to the degree of consensus that we have here and listening to the professionals saying, we need to have a lot of this alternative analysis for the EIR anyway, and believing that our professionals are not going to deviate and drift way away and introduce, you know, wild concepts and all of that other stuff, I'm willing, I'm reluctant, but I'm willing to say, do the Alternatives Concept Report, but what, but, but with that caveat that you're hearing the board saying, we're not looking for big changes, we're not looking for.
Can we, can we see if that's what you guys are saying, or are we doing something different?
Yeah, I think we should probably go to which item you're on for the recommended actions. That might be helpful as well.
Well, you tell me which one, which item, you tell me which.
Starting with number two.
You have, you have Alternative Concept Report in two, in items two and three.
Three.
So the structural changes.
Yeah, exactly.
Hang on, hang on, let her talk.
I'm just trying to deal with the, with the, trying to deal with the big picture on it.
Okay, who's going to talk? You can talk.
So you have an Alternatives Concepts Report as an exhibit that is completed, and it's basically an outline of the strategy to complete what's called the Alternatives Report. So the Concepts Report is done and is Exhibit Two.
I know you have a document that said you were going to bring the Alternatives Concept Report back to us in July. Am I reading that wrong?
Or, and you're saying.
The Alternatives Report.
Oh, and so it's going to be the Alternatives Report.
It's going to be Alternative Report.
Okay, all right. So do we do?
I think we're okay with that.
Do we do this Alternatives Report, all right?
The Alternatives Concept Report laid out a method for what we might look at in the Alternatives Report. So you can think of it kind of like a staff report.
So with, so the direction I would, I would suggest is to keep us on track and not have this thing grow too far, is that we direct staff to, yes, do this, but we're not looking to drift a lot. We don't think we have to drift a lot, but we're willing to have alternatives so that we are ready for the EIR and if you see something in particular that's out there. Now, as you do the Alternatives Report, the question, the fundamental question is, what's the criteria? How do you do the criteria for the developmental, the development potential, right? And what I'm suggesting is that we direct staff to not use the historical average, which is what they wrote up and said they were, they were suggesting, but instead they use something that we think more represents, as I've heard so many people say here.
They want to use the SCAG projections, not the historical projections.
If I could, the, the Alternatives Report will have a chapter completely dedicated to population projections. There are other ones out there we will bring forward, like I mentioned Caltrans. So we will give you a range of what the current line of thought is about.
You might, you might, if we ask you, but I'm, and that's what happens oftentimes here, I have to tell you, is what we're trying to say is what we want to limit it to. I'm not sure we want that, all right? And that's what Supervisor Parks was just getting ready to, you know, to try to bring up. First, I'm just trying to say, you asked the question, what methodology should you use to determine what the developmental potential, what the development potential is? And you specifically in here said you were going to use what the development historically has been for that land use density, correct?
Kimmy? Well, we've proposed, we've proposed looking at historical growth as well as projected growth from the SCAG numbers.
I'm not talking about the SCAG numbers yet, I'm sorry, but you also said, when you tried to decide, how, how many ADUs are we going to build, right? You said here, we don't think you could, should use all 16,000. We could say, for development potential, we want you to maximize every place, right? But that's not what we're asking. But what you said you guys were going to do there is you would use historically what has happened with ADUs in the past. That's too low. That's the point I'm trying to make with this point here, all right? I'm not asking about SCAG numbers yet. I'm saying the methodology that you're going to use to determine what our development potential is going to be is one that you professionally use better judgment. You've heard a number of people here say, we think ADUs are gradually going to get more and more accepted, popular, and happen. So we want you to try to make a good faith projection of that.
And we're working on that. What I would recommend is Supervisor Parks brought up a table that was out of the old housing element that showed a breakdown of a number of different pieces that add into the overall housing. And we will tell you what we think is our best professional opinion, not using the historic for like ADUs, but to give you what we think is changing because of changes in state law.
Well.
But there's a difference between the estimates for ADUs and estimates for things like population estimates and number of units. And if you're going to use the historic, you'll, and as Bruce Smith was saying, you take it a little bit longer, you'll actually see that we've been having to decline historically. If you use SCAG data instead for that population estimate, you're going to end up with 20% to 40% more.
Still, still another question, I'm just not ready to get there yet. I'm talking about page eight, item four C. It says development, it says applying average area densities to land you, to land identified with development potential to determine total development potential. All right? That's item, on the Alternatives Concept Report, item four C. Did I see that line?
No.
Alternative, alternative Concepts Report. This report here, right?
That's a good exhibit.
Alternative Concepts Report. This says development constraints, and it says, when we go to try to figure out what the development potential is, the developability of the land, you could do it a lot of different ways. You could say maximize it, right?
The, what this is talking about is if the world stayed the same, what would those likely yield? And so we were saying, we would look at the average of what's being built. Now, in an alternative, we could say, we want to encourage this to go high density in this area. And to do that, we are going to add these policies that will encourage that to happen.
No, that's, I, I'm asking you, I'm suggesting applying average area densities, residential development and intensities, non-residential development to land identified. What you're saying is, you're going to apply average area densities there, which basically tells us what's happened in the past.
That will give us, that will give us a baseline, and then from the baseline, we can decide if we're short or heavy on units, and from there, we can make policy adjustments. So this isn't.
Boy, you're not hearing me, okay? I, you say, that's going to give us a baseline, and then we'll know whether we're short or not. The baseline that I want you to give us is the baseline that doesn't do this, but the baseline I want you to give us is the baseline is instead of, we think realistically, this is what's going to happen. It's, life is going to be different because land is more valuable now. There will be higher densities. Already make that the baseline. Without policy changes, what, we know that there, things will get denser. So what is that before we decide how much more land we have to develop? I don't know if I've lost everybody, but.
No, sir, we can, we could have that number for you as well.
Kim, have I lost you?
Kim.
And that kind of is the. I think I would need you to run that for one more, one more time.
If I, maybe I could try explaining what I hear, sir.
Could I, could I let Kim try this first? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking you to explain that to me one more time, and then I will, I will see if I get that number.
Mr. Barnes is here, thanks.
All right. We got X amount of land out here that has been developed at certain areas, and we have to figure out what's our development potential with our current general plan, our current land use zoning, right?
Using zoning. Using our, using our current zoning.
Using our current zoning.
Okay.
How much can we build? And we've already had this professional hearsay. When you did, you know, it's what Supervisor Parks has been talking about, you know, where we do use the 16,000, and so we don't need to, we can accommodate everything. And he says, I don't think that's really accurate. You can't, you can't count on 16,000 ADUs. He said, no way that's going to happen, right? So he's going to use what? What criteria is he going to use to determine that? What I read this report as saying is, you're going to use what's happened in the past, and you're going to say, if we have these three parcels that haven't been developed, but all the parcels around them have been developed as one house per two acres, then we're going to say only one house per two acres, or one house per half. And worse, and I'm saying, that's not realistic, how the future's going to happen. And so what we'll do is we'll underestimate our development potential and err on the side of needing more land to be rezoned for development. We should use a more accurate prediction as to how much can we develop with our current land, not going all the way to the max, just something that professionally is defensible. Not going all the way to the max, just something that professionally is defensible, that you think is more accurate in terms of doing that. So that's what I'm, does that, does that, that help?
Yeah, I guess my, my question to that would be, is accurate, accurate based on what data, right?
Well, I'm, I'm saying you professionally, you know what data you have. Professionally, how, what do you recommend as, 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 as the modification that reflects higher housing costs, that reflects ministerial approvals for, you know, additional dwelling units, that kind of stuff? That's not reflected accurately in the current historical data. And that's the, that's the rub, because that then influences how much land has to be rezoned for development.
Could I request that the table be put back up? That was the last in my slide. If you can do that upstairs in the booth, just because this, if you're looking at existing zoning, what we have the availability to put in between now and 2040. I know even that is a little light in terms of Cal State Island has 600 units, and it's written down on 242 units. There's concern that we won't meet the ADUs based on past performance, but we know that laws have changed, and now there's going to be an easier way to do ADUs. But the idea that we have a pretty significant cushion, as I see it, with looking at 28,000 additional units based on current zoning, and that's where I was getting my emphasis was, if we want to stick to this, we actually have to be an advocate for it. We have to be proactive and say, how do we do that? You know, what more can we do to incentivize so that we can do that and have that good cushion? So I, I'm, I'm having trouble saying, why do we need to find more land to develop when we have adequate? And I also know that we have already identified farmworker sites, and I think it was at 970 or 940 units of farmworker housing has already been identified out there in the, in the general plan. But I just, I guess I'm trying to figure out, why are we going through this effort to try to find more land when this gives us a sufficient buffer?
If, if we want to give them direction to maximize the conversion of land, which is what this chart does, am I correct? This is the one where we said, hey, you know, take everything to the max. If we want to give them that, if you're, if you're recommending we do that, but in the past you have said you don't want to do that, but-
I mean, I, you're looking at this one, I deal with the farmworker complexes, they're not sighted anywhere, and they could be built and I'd cultural land, but they would be, they would require a taking of agricultural properties to build them. There's not a designation for it, it's a concept that could be built. And so we certainly can go forward with that kind of idea, but it, it's not a, there's not a zone in the county right now that says this is where the complex goes. The idea was you'd take a piece of ag land out of production and you'd build a complex. Now, that's where the workers live, it's where they work, that makes sense.
And, and you've also said, you don't think we're going to build 16,000 second dwelling units in the unincorporated area, correct?
I would find, even with the reduction in, we've looked at other places and trends that are going for this, and it does have an uptick, but not to that extent.
Supervisor Park, if we adopt this, if we adopt this, you're right, the development potential is so large that there won't have to be any changes, right? But in the past, you've said you didn't want to adopt this, so I'm, I'm actually trying to come up with-
This, this, if you see the 1,361, that's at 1.9 dwelling units per acre, and that's what we currently have. So it, I, I disagree with you that this maximizes everything. This is actually taking existing, what we have capacity for.
We could, I, I've understood what both of you were saying. We could look at this and provide you what we think, if there's adjustments to it, we think are valid, we could provide support for that and use that. For Supervisor Bennett, I understand your concept is if we find a couple acres of land, instead of saying it's going to be two single-family homes, because that's what the rest of the community is, that we look at and go, well, this could be a quadplex. We, we could build four units here, not the two, that would be typical in the area. That would, you know, if we looked at it and said, in our professional opinion, this could support a, a fourplex instead of-
Certainly with, with, with ADUs, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that we should not use the historical past for ADUs.
Correct.
We should, we should use a projection in the future for ADUs.
We are, we're collecting information-
And the 16,000 is maxing out ADUs, correct?
We are collecting information from other jurisdictions now that looks at what's happened in the last year since the change in the, the state laws, and see what kind of uptick there is. And there's not going to be a direct evidence, but we can give you a better idea of what is likely happening in the state right now because of changes in state law, and see how that would, I mean, we're not asking you to, to vote and say, yeah, we're using that table or we're using this table. I, I can take the two ideas you've given us, come back with a little more support either way, and tell you what we think professionally, and then you can give us, based on that further information, give us-
Well, I, I sure would like to know what we can do to incentivize what we have, not maximizing to 20 units per acre. This, this all works with that 1.9 units. I would continue to see, what can we do as a county? What incentives can we put out there to see that we can be successful with what we have?
I just want to also assure your board that we are not looking at historical for ADUs. Your board has just adopted a very progressive ADU ordinance, and we've already shown, when we were here last, that we have issued, I think, four times as many ADUs than we did the year before. So we will be looking and projecting out those numbers, and I think that will be part of the solution. So we're not going to look at historical on that, we're going to look at our new ordinance.
Yeah, but also going forward, this, none of this really makes a whole lot of difference to me personally. If the cities don't do their part, none of this is really going to do it. It really has to do with the cities. We're never going to build 28,000 units in, in the unincorporated area. The biggest problem we have with all of this, we're dealing with this, I guess you're talking about right now, Simi Valley's got them all, it's not doing well, they want to put a whole bunch of housing over it and then have to swap them in. They're fighting it, because the cities don't want growth, the cities don't want any of that stuff. So this is going to be the hardest part. So any number we pick here is not the end of the world, because 90% of this has to be done in the cities anyway. So I, I just think we need to take what we've got and try to move this forward, I think.
All right. So, so, so my point is, I appreciate what you said, because as I read item four C, I would have applied historical, I would have average densities on ADUs to ADUs. And you're saying you, you will do it differently than that? That's, that's, that's the direction that I hope we would be giving. So that would be part of that motion when it comes to items two and, and three on holding capacity and development potential analysis, right? On item four, direction on historical growth rates in 2020 to 2040, you know, we had three charts up there, and I would take the lowest chart, the 540, which is what we've done in the last 20 years, and the other chart would be the SCAG chart, which would be about 10% more than that. And those would be the only two alternatives that I would look at, but I'm not sure what other people think, right?
Yeah, I, I, I just don't, I won't support it, because I, I don't think we need to go there. I mean, I just, you have to have a problem before you need a solution, and I'm not seeing a problem where I have to expand beyond what we already have.
When, when we go to do alternative analysis, will we have to have an alternative analysis?
Growth projections are growth projections, are growth projections, and we don't have to have alternative growth projections, right?
What do you want, what do you want to see? Because I don't think it makes that much difference. We're not going to hit it anyway. I mean, really, you can put-
So what do you want, do you use the historical one, the 540?
Would you rather use historical or what?
I leave it, I leave it to staff. What do you, what is your suggestion?
They're suggesting all three.
Well, no, no, I, I think that we're, we're going to look at the, the historic population growth and the population growth that that SCAG is giving us. Like you said, it's just a target, it's just, we're not getting married to any one of those numbers, and the, and the delta between them both is so small over a year period. That it, that it could be if we look and we come just halfway in the middle of these and say, that's what we're going to just project growth, by the time we finish the analysis and come back with the alternative concept report, it could be that we don't have a problem, right? But it's not just residential that we're looking at. We're looking at, do we have enough industrial land for the next 20 years? So it's not, it's not just the issue of, of residential, because maybe we have plenty of residential, but maybe we don't have enough of industrial. And those are the exercises that we're going to, to go through between now and September.
So what do you want to do, Supervisor Parks?
Well, what would I like to do is, I don't think we need to put out an alternative that allows for more development in the farmland when our whole principles and our point is to not do that. So I'm, I'm not in favor of, you know, let's come up with another proposal where we would do that. I mean, that is just, why waste the money and the time? You have to do your ER, do your EIR, you know, and have the consultants do the EIR. That, that to me isn't a policy decision, but if you're going to start doing alternative concept report, like alternative reports where you look at a different land use scenario, you're talking about a land use scenario that allows more development.
Listen, does it really make any difference if we just leave it at one and not do it? And you use one, both of them are the same? I mean, what, like you said, it's just a projection. We projected stuff for the last 20 years, and we haven't got close to those projections, have we? Our growth was not even close, I think, over the last 20 years. If you go back historical, I mean, what historically has happened, what we did project there?
I think that it, I, I don't think philosophically it's going to make a lot of difference to what we bring back to you in September, for where you're really going to make a lot of decisions. This is just points that you absolutely don't want us spending any time on, right? Or, or points that you're saying, yes, we need some information, we would like some more information on ADUs, we want to see if there's a problem, so come back to us in September. But even, so for these things, it's, you know, I don't really think the number is that big of a difference. I think the policy issues is where we might have some more conversation about, do you want us to study some of these policy issues, or do you want us to leave them alone?
So if, if I could, I mean, Supervisor Parks says she doesn't want to adopt a number that might have us, that would have us converting more farmland. I just think that the difference between 540 and, and 660, or whatever that is, 120 people a year, is, you know, if, if the alternative analysis says, hey, this means we're going to convert a bunch of farmland, I'm, I'm going to, that'll make a difference. But I think it's likely to not influence whether we convert farmland at all, because we will have the development potential already in the existing area, and we will have checked, in other words, we'll say, our development potential will handle the growth, whether we use the low number or the high number, but it's, that's what I suspect will happen. But I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not out here trying to ram this down if, if, so if it's, if it's one number or two numbers, it just seems like it's more prudent for us to start with two numbers and say, we're trying to shoot for something in between these two probably, or the low, the low number may be what we go with because it affects the land use change. But to simply only have one number feels constrained, and, and it doesn't feel like by doing the other we go to that.
Perhaps we could go about this a different way. Perhaps, perhaps we can look at our existing urban footprint in the communities and the area plans, look at what their potential is, and then come back with that number, and we can see how this matches up to the world. But just, what will the world likely build out? Using, sir, what you said about, what do we think these properties could do in the future? We could bring that number back, it may all balance out with whatever projection we have. We didn't, we didn't grow our urban boundaries any, knowing that's the direction the board wants to keep those tight boundaries. And so look at what your world could offer, and then we can come back and talk further about if we should do anything else.
Staff, what do you think of that recommendation from?
I would just refer not being put into a box. I don't think they're asking for a number, Supervisor Bennett.
Those are only estimates.
They're not asking for a number.
Yeah, I agree.
What you can suggest is, we're asking about, they want us direction on policy. One of the directions we want to give them is, don't use historic ADUs, and then move on to the next item.
We already did that historic ADUs, but they are asking for them. I guess number four, provide input and direction on using historical growth rates and the 20, 20, 20, 40 growth projections from chapter two. That's a specific number.
Do you guys need a number?
They are asking for that, and so-
Mr. Chair, I think this is only estimates, so come back with that.
Yeah, because she said we don't need a specific number.
But, but that's what it asks for.
I know, but let's, let's just say, can we-
But I'm fine, okay?
Can we say without it?
We got it, we got it finessed.
Okay, good.
All right.
We, we don't, we don't want to be the most difficult county you ever worked with, but we're getting close.
You got a ways to go. Those are estimates, we'll come back and, and share that information with us once you get them down. You know, I think that's the important thing.
We'll go, we'll go through the whole county, we'll look at what the potentials are, what the likelihoods are, and we'll bring that number back, and then we can chat more about what that means.
Now, if you would have said that 30 minutes ago, it would have been done.
I'm going to give you just a couple other things that I see from, from my perspective, if people object, and I think that's probably how we're going to end up doing this motion if nobody objects or stuff. And that is, under evaluation criteria, I know you have 12 of them listed there, and I, I like them all, I would like to have promote environmental justice added as an environmental criteria. I know we can't do all of them, but I would add-
See, I'd like to take environmental justice out, because I don't know what environmental justice means.
Okay, all right.
Because I thought there's just justice.
Great, so we'll, we'll, we'll have to have a conversation or-
But Mr. Chair.
Right now, I'm just trying to find out what we agree-
You, you, because I can have a good, a good argument with you on that, environmental justice.
So, so my point is, I'll, I'll take it out, we can talk about it later. I'm just trying to find out, what do we agree on, okay?
Okay.
And so far, not too much, right?
Supervisor Bennett? I think environmental justice is extremely important.
I know, and so we're going to have to have a vote on that specific. So right now, I'm trying to do the first motion, which is where we don't have objection. Then we'll come back to the issues like the vision statement, we've got to come back to because we have disagreement.
You already have it.
We have environmental justice.
You already have it.
It's in the, it's in the, and the state law requires-
But it's not listed as one of the 12 concepts that they're going to use. They're suggesting that they narrow it down to 12, it was not one of the 12, correct?
16 is the much-.
It's not one of the 12 listed here.
We gave you four extras in case you couldn't decide, but-
What's that?
We asked the public for 12, knowing that there could be some extra thoughts brought up today.
And they said, you don't want to study all 26, so we're recommending these 12. Environmental justice is not in here. So I'm suggesting that you add it to this, but I'll hold that from this motion. Right now, I have a motion that has almost nothing except some vague staff, you know what I mean? And we have all agreed, and all agree on that, right? Okay, the other one is, under evaluation criteria, we have promote affordable housing, everybody agrees with that. We have promote transit service, and I would, I would, I would add this, promote multimodal transportation facilities. And so that way, we combine transit service and bicycle pedestrian, because I think it's a little bit like what you did with open space. If you break the two apart, then you get some people voting for one, some people voting for the other, and really what, there are people that want that. So I would, I, there are two criteria. Now, if you guys object to that, I'll pull that off until we have the debate, but-
Back to you, here is the question, is there a question or clarification from the planning as to what Supervisor Bennett is working on?
Oh, no, it's all been perfectly clear.
I'm pulling that off. Different. In the alternative concepts report-
I can see Mr. head spinning over here.
So in the, it's alternative concepts report, are, are we under item 4.2, the alternative evaluation criteria? Is that, because we want to make sure that-
Under evaluation criteria.
Right, so there's 26 proposed evaluation criterias there, right? 26.
26, not 12.
That's right.
We're asking for 26.
And, and we're saying out of those, for, for an evaluation, we can do them all, right? But we're saying it would be nice to narrow them down, and as there, as there 16, that's, that's the kind of the exercise there under 4.2.
So we need to cut some out, not add.
Or, or add or expound, either one.
I'm saying you cut it, I feel like you cut it down to 12 in your PowerPoint. I'm trying to add two, Supervisor Foy doesn't want to add one, and he's still trying to decide whether he wants to add the other.
What are we adding?
I'm, well, we're adding, we're adding what I just read.
We can pull the PowerPoint out, too.
PowerPoint had two slides that identified 12, one for the folks' groups, one from the open houses.
And from what I, what I understood-
They identified 12, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to expand that.
To 16.[1693.01]
Is that just explaining what happened in the open houses? So, you don't need to change what happened in the open houses in their description. I think that was just a PowerPoint presentation.
I, I just want to be clear that they don't walk out of here and use these 12, because it's.
Are you going to walk out of here and just use those 12?
The point, the point.
They, they've asked, I want to be clear, they've asked us to not do 26. So, they've got 12, and I think that's the, your implication, that's what's suggested. And I know you say, we'll take whatever you want. So I'm saying, take these 12, all right, add, and I've, I've got, I say add economic justice, but I'll pull that off the table for right now, for now. Add multimodal, right, transportation, and the reminder, the thing that we talked about before, add, you know, open space protection, right? And so, each time that they do, do something, they use those 15 criteria to do their little buttons on. That doesn't mean they can't do the others also, but they were trying to narrow it down and not make it, you know.
I think you want to say something real quick.
This is the slide you're referring to, sir?
That's right.
Okay. So you're saying to take the blue items on here, add the, the few others you added there?
Add, that's right. Add those three that I.
And when you're talking transportation, transit, what about having transit near high density? You know, if you're going to build apartments, do you want transit near?
If you want to add more, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to rule anything out.
Yeah, I wouldn't rule that out, because it's hard if there's land in a city or something, and there's no transit next to it, it's hard.
And, and as I see it, they're just describing what happened in the former meetings.
That's right. These just came out of the meetings. This isn't telling you what to do. Here's what it, just a report out of what the meetings were.
This isn't a recommendation, it's a reporting.
It's a report, yeah. It's just have some facts.
And that kind of gets us back to our, the first motion that we were going to make regarding the vision and the guiding principles.
And the motion.
And, and, you know, that's, we have environmental justice in that, so that, that being a guiding principle has to be flown throughout our decisions and the elements of the general plan.
I think environmental justice is really important. Why don't you finish with?
Well, the, the, the difference why I say the environmental justice, some people say in Oxnard, there's issues, right? So environmental, I get people in Simi Valley telling me, why can't we be like Oxnard, where I can just get in my car and drive down the street and go to my job? Because they've got a lot more manufacturing, a lot more jobs there. And so, that's why I struggle with this whole deal. What, what do you define as environmental justice when you do this?
But it's an all-inclusive item. Environmental justice has to do with land use.
But still, it is already, and it's a requirement by law.
Okay, but if, if, if the state requires, just put it in, and let's just move on. I don't want to discuss.
What is not in the guiding principles, however, is open space.
It says be 1,000, yeah.
Bottom line is.
You have agriculture, but you don't have open space in the guiding principles.
Bottom line is, in just a minute, we're going to have a vote on economic justice, up or down, right? And you'll just vote no.
Okay, that's fine. You can use one by itself.
So, that, but, I'm, I'm trying to get the, the elements of agreement, and then, then we have, then we vote on all the things we disagree on, right? So, I'll tell you what, what I think I have left, right, is that, under policy, there's 10 policy items. On top of everything else, you ask us to give you a direction on 10 policy items. I'm going to give you a direction on 10 policy items. If people want to follow along, that is, in the board letter, it's on page 10 and 11, there are 10 policy questions. So if you look at the 10 policy questions, I'll read them for the benefit of moving us along. To help address the need for affordable housing, should alternative housing types be considered? And residential building heights and density be increased, right?
I miss him this.
And, I'm, and I'm saying that, in general, that issue should be trailed until we have the development capacity analysis. I'm not saying that we don't do it, but that, that should be trailed until we have the development capacity analysis. We know we want to do more workforce housing, but let's, let's figure out whether we have to do it with changing heights and all that stuff. And that's mostly more specific to area plans than it is to the general plan. I'm, I'm giving you a thought. Item two, it says, what infrastructure improvements will be vital for meeting future needs? That's a basic issue for the general plan, and I don't, I'm not ready to say that, I'm, I'm ready to have you bring it back to us. What, what is the infrastructure that we need, rather than us in, in, in the front? Sure, we need, we need, you know, our roads to work, we need the water, you know, pipelines to work, you know, we need that, but it, it feels premature to do that, in my own thought. Item three, should increases in building lot coverage standards for smaller agricultural parcels be considered as a strategy to increase economic vitality? It's worth studying it, but, the, the rub is going to be, does it, does it, does it lead to an impaction in terms of agricultural land that, that is out there? So, again, it strikes me that that's not a study inside the general plan, that'd be a study outside the general plan, in, in terms of doing that. I'm offering answers. Four, is there a need to clarify uses for open space and explore creation of open space zones for park lands and public lands? Yes, that'd be my answer. It's appropriate for a general plan update to have, you know, hey, this is, this is, these are some things we want to do with open space. I think that the risk I'm going to offer to the, to my colleagues is, some people use this as a reason to narrow down what is open space and, and, and try to play with that. But overall, it's a fair question, and it should happen.
We do have a request to actually have an overlay zone for parks and that, public parks, and that way, I think that could take care of that.
Exactly.
So you support that?
Yes, I do support that. Five, should the county plan for continued water quantity challenges by exploring the feasibility of connecting? And I know everybody's talking about the county and water, but we are not water purveyors. We have 240 water districts in Ventura County. We have an important role to play, and that is sort of a coordinator and facilitator, but I don't think that that role is what you play in your general plan update. That's a role that you play, but we're not going to start actually micromanaging the water with the, with the general plan, in the general plan update. So I think it's really important, quite frankly, from my perspective, it's the most important thing that I want to work on for the next two and a half years, but not through the general plan.
What if, for example, you want to take capture of rainwater and prioritize that, and say you can do that if you have dual use of agriculture land, for example? So they could capture water. Right now, you can't, because it's not agriculture. So, there are things that you can do from a land use perspective to allow for that.
Sure, and, and I'm, and I agree, I'm not opposed to that, but this question says, should we sort of like take on the, exploring the feasibility of connecting to the state water project?
Yeah.
That's not a, that's not a question that we should be putting, that's, that's a specific to these 240 water districts and what they're doing. We, we dealt with that this morning. So, anyway, that's my thought. I'm certainly in, in favor of anything that's, it, it falls under water conservation, and we have the whole environmental side of the report, so we, we could do that. We got four, five to go, but I'm, anyway, I'm, I'm doing what staff asks us to do. They said give them input on those things.
Should we be a part of it?
We should, as a board of supervisors, but not through the general plan. But yes, as a board of supervisors. Are there land use changes needed to address the increasing risks of developing within hazardous zones? This is a, is a topic that should be in the hazardous element of the general plan. So yes, I think we should, certainly with all these fires and stuff, when we do the hazardous element, we ought to have that in there. Seven, support implementation.
And debris flows, debris flows also, something we haven't really incorporated.
That's what I, in fact, as I wrote down, particularly fires, floods.
Kim, you're shaking your head, you're good with all that? Okay.
Seven, to support implementation of health in all policies, what policies are, are needed. I thought that there was one, a nice addition, and that is access to clean air and clean water.
And sidewalks in El Rio.
Yeah. We, we didn't hear anything about sidewalks?
All right. What key policies, such as supportive business incubators? Yes, we should, we should do that. I don't, I don't have any key policies, except to suggest that we ought to try to focus them in the cities, if we can. What policies are needed to support reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, increased alternatives? We definitely need those policies. I'm not ready at this point in time for us to lay them out, except to give staff direction. We want a robust, vigorous climate change program. And what policies?
Renewable, renewable energy projects.
That, that would fit under policies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
But you said you're not ready for that. What does that mean?
I'm, I'm not ready to list all of the things, renewable projects, this, that, et cetera. I'm saying, staff, create that, that whole list for us, is what I would do. I, I don't want, and no matter what list we create, there's, there may be more, I want staff to say, well, you know, the board didn't give them that. I'm saying, take them all, tell us what you feel like we can get accomplished. And then 10, what policies will serve to reduce pollution exposure, and including improvement in air quality? And that seems to be an appropriate issue to be adopted in the GPU. The issue of ag buffers, the appropriate citing of health risks such as landfills and toxic conditions, that seems very appropriate for that. And, and so, yes, address those in this general plan update.
And health in all policies is clean water, and also clean air, cooperating in that, too.
That's what I, I already added that to, to that. So, I know that's pretty, I, I know Lori got that all captured in lang, you know, in language there.
Okay, so, do you want him to repeat that in finally?
And I, I would also.
I'm not sure, a reporter out here understands 100% what's happening, so.
I also note that, in our.
You're just listening, that's the rest of us.
In our guiding principles, we do have multimodal transportation, which was, you were throwing in there also.
I just want to make sure it's an evaluation criteria for the buttons.
And, and, you, the first vote was to approve the vision statement. So are we putting this off, or do you want to hear what our vision statement is?
I, I, I just want to pull that off. Let's vote on this two through eight, you know?
Okay, got it.
And I would, I would think, that general discussion that staff nodded their head in agreement to, and that, you know, I think it's better, I think it's better to just see, I, I think staff's got the basic direction, and if people are comfortable with that, that's where I would go.
Can I get one clarification? Can I get one clarification on item, on item three? Because I think that'll be important. So, because we've heard, we've heard this a lot in our, in our tour around the county. Should increases in building lot coverage standards for smaller agricultural parcels be considered as a strategy to increase the economic viability? So, I, I think I heard you say, maybe not in the general plan, but maybe.
I'm, I'm not ready to embrace that right now in this broad, we have great consensus, only because I think that there's, the devil's in the details, and I, I want to understand what staff is thinking. In my, in my own opinion, I might be willing to embrace that later, but not now.
Are we, are we talking about if a farmer has a large, a large plot, and we want to provide it to our kids? And then that's then.
Well, so what, what happens in the agricultural community is, if you have a lot smaller than 40 acres, right? 40 acres, you get 5% lot coverage. If you happen to have a one acre agricultural, and you want to intensify that use, you still are pretty constrained by the lot coverage requirements. And so I guess the, the main point is, I don't want to, to do a lot of work, if it would trigger a SOAR vote, is that a threshold, yes or no question for a SOAR vote? So if we look at this policy, and then we say, oh, oh, if we do that, that will be an intensification of farming, therefore triggers a SOAR vote, so therefore, don't go here. I think that's a, a line that we're trying to understand from your board today.
We don't need to do anything to cause a SOAR vote.
I certainly would say, I would not want to give you direction today to start down the road on general plan amendments that would require a SOAR vote.
Right, I would agree with that, yeah.
Like always, Peter and I agree.
You agree. We don't need to put that kind of stuff that everybody's going to, yeah.
Yeah, so does that help? Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask staff, and ask the professional, do you think you got the direction enough that if there's no objection?
You got to tell us the truth, don't give us that look.
No, I just, I can, I can review what I heard, and we can confirm it with, and this is just for the item, item for the policy questions, which is the item number seven. And basically, there's concurrence that number four should be considered, and that's the park zone question. And then number six, for the hazard, the hazards, and, and including debris flow should be considered. The other item that should be considered would be the, um, uh, let's see.
Nine and 10?
Yeah, uh, let's see, I have eight. Eight, well, seven also, but we add access to clean water and air. And we have eight, but there was a, to keep, to not, I suppose not include it, because incubators should be in cities, correct? So we wouldn't put in, we would take out business incubators.
Like it, just, just, just.
Take it out. So that would be removed.
Because we're doing it in our general plan, we want to try to encourage them, but encourage them to locate.
So that would be removed. And then the final one would be number 10, and those policies. And just so you know, that actually is, that's straight out of the environmental justice requirements for general plans. So, that will help us form those goals and policies.
Influence Supervisor Foye to vote for.
And those are the four that I captured, and if I missed them, please correct me.
I think you got most of it.
Can I have a clarification? When we go back to incubators, we're saying that we would support them in the cities. Is that what it was, or you were taking it completely out?
Well, that's why it wasn't clear, because we're not going to evaluate incubators in cities in our general plan update, so.
No, but, but, but there's got to be something, because if you're talking about incubators in a sense of ag-type situations, you can't do it.
Yeah, it could, it does, it could be, because we have agricultural clusters, we talked about in the background report.
Exactly, yeah.
And also tourism as a cluster as well. There's different clusters that were identified, so.
That's why I didn't want you to take it out.
Yeah.
Oh, so just.
That's why I want to make sure you understand.
Well, because there's two different types. If you're going to do some type of bio thing or whatever else, that's going to be in some warehousing in the city, most likely. But the other stuff, the ag stuff, is going to be in the ag. So I'm not sure you'd take it out.
So, I, I think that, I think the compromise that gets us all, all there is, don't take it out. But don't, but, but try to, as we develop this, we want to recognize that most of the time, that's what I was trying to say, most of the time, these things should be in cities. Doesn't mean every, doesn't mean every one of them.
If there's certain special why it should be in the ag, then that's it, right, okay. I agree with that.
I didn't hear you say that you heard nine, that we said, yes, definitely go.
I think she said yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes, I did. Yes, I did, sorry. Yes, that was correct. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, so you summarized the policies. Kim, do you feel like you got the idea about development potential, that, that, that contorted the conversation that we had there?
I do. I do, and I, I think then the, then the last thing that we would have to do is the 4.2, to winnow down those 26 items to 16, right? We still have that exercise to do.
Well, we got them down to 15, I thought.
And we added open space.
I thought they were on all three.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I just want to be clear about this. So this is what we heard at, at the public workshops, and we want to make sure that we say, it might be refined in a different way from the board and the planning commission. So we've given you these 16 qualifiers. Do you want to go with these, and then just add the two, and not talk about the, the remaining ones that are on?
Where are your 16 qualifiers?
They're 4.2, they're in 4.2, on, on the alternative concept report, that's page 11.
Thank you, we may have been overlooking that.
Yeah, so there's, there's 26 of them altogether, and so those, those were for your consideration to try to, try to get those down to 16, recognizing that that will be very difficult.
Is there any way to get it up?
Yes.
Let's, let's get it up before we go further, because this is confusing.
All right, and I, and I did put in the PowerPoint, for the first one, that says promote land use efficiency, and everybody nodded their head when I said, and assure consistency with SOAR, and the guidelines for early development. Okay. So, you want to, you want to knock this down to 16, and I guess the way you knock it down to 16 is you can combine some of these things. And, your staff in the PowerPoint presentation sort of implied there were a top 12. So I think that, at least from my perspective, thought that that's what some people were suggesting, that it's, it's refined down to that, that 12. Quite frankly, I'm not ready to figure out which of these 26, anybody here ready to say which, which of these 26 go down to 16?
And Supervisor.
I'd say keep them all for right now.
I agree, too.
Because I, I just don't think we're ready. At, at, at 6 o'clock, we're not ready to dive into all 26 of these. Yeah, there you go, right. We're just not ready to do that, you know, and, I think there could be a way to, there could be a way to combine these, or could be a way to.
Is there a, a legal way where we could just submit ours? Like each of us submit, and we might all have roughly, you know, whatever adds up to 16?
Kim, what's, tell, tell us what the reason is, why do we need to get to 16?
Right, and that's what I'm hoping to hear from, from Rick, to say, is it possible to do it with 26, or is it going to be a budgetary and a, and a, and a difficult issue? And have you ever done it with that many? I think it's going to be a hard exercise to go down.
I, I'm just looking at this, and I called it in the afternoon. Basically, is it okay if we just have three for categories?
I mean, I, there, there's a lot of good things here, but is there a way that we can do land use into the three items, and environmental into the three items? If you keep asking people all these different questions, they're going to get lost and start plugging in whatever, and not. So I'm just concerned.
If I could help, I, I appreciate that, but, Kim, I think this is kind of what throws me off, is when I read 4.2, this is what it says in the last sentence of the paragraph before it gets into preliminary alternative value. It says, based on public input, planning commission and board of supervisors' direction, this list will be further refined to identify up to 16 evaluation criteria. So I got the feeling you guys are going to take it down to 16 after we gave you input. So I've given some input, right? But, the way this is written, it makes, it says, this list will be further refined. It didn't say, board of supervisors, come ready to refine this down to 16. So, based on that, I think nobody here, from the planning commission and the board of supervisors, felt like they had direction had direction to narrow this down to sixteen. I would say, you've heard some stuff from us, narrow, you know, make, make a shot at it. Bring those sixteen back, if you, if you want to.
I highlighted sixteen of them, and I got it ready to go whenever you want it, but I highlighted sixteen.
Hi Kathleen, thank you for coming.
I can always give them to you, but I did highlight sixteen.
Okay, so, so anyway, that's, you've got a conundrum in that you didn't give us direction to actually narrow down to sixteen. You said, give you input. We're giving you input, leaving you with the task of narrowing it down.
I'm sorry, that list does get very specific. I throw an option out here, just for the heck of it. Your guiding principles, there's, what, ten or twelve of them, they're very, they cover all the topics you've all been talking about. I could just use these, and we could just talk about how the alternatives meet the outlines of the guiding principles.
That sounds good to me.
Is preserving open space part of that?
We've got, yeah, I don't think it's specific to that. We have conservation and open space.
That's conservation, that works.
Yeah, that's, that's one of your guiding principles, and we just use the actual principle to define how we measure this.
Everything you want, you're right, is on those, is on this whole list, you're right, so we should just go with that.
The guiding principles?
You might as well, it gets everything.
Right.
Is, is economic justice on there?
It's got environmental justice.
Environmental justice is at the bottom. Environmental justice on there.
I am, I'm in, I'm in. You wore me down. Plus it's state law, too.
It's there anyways.
Do we want to incorporate the right to farm ordinance as part of the general plan? Kim, is that something that you would do, or you would just put it in the policies?
Yeah, it's already an ordinance. We'll incorporate that, just the same as we incorporate SOAR into the general plan.
Nobody has a problem with adding that into the general plan, good.
The important thing is environmental justice is here, so let's go ahead.
So we got that vote, we didn't even have to have the vote, right?
He's already on here.
So now we got the question of vision and guiding principles, so I'll let somebody else.
I would just ask if we could.
See, if that's the next hour and a half, you're done? Okay.
I would just ask if we could ask our CEO if they can draft something that, out of what is already there, and make it a little bit more succinct and clear?
I thought he already drafted this.
Is that giving him too much?
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable.
Because I just feel like, really, if you look at it, and I would be glad to read it, since we are gonna vote on it, and we don't have it before us, unless you have it on the slide?
We do have it. It's in, yeah, it's in the.
Okay. Do you have it before you?
Yeah, let me go. I can get it for you.
Mr. Chair, Steve.
If you read it and then you take away, say, what did it just say? It just told you we have mountains and beaches, and we collaborate with people, but is that really a vision?
Ken, while this is coming up, Kim, could you give us the history of the development of this vision and guiding principles?
Guiding principle I'm good with. It's the vision statement just isn't.
Could you give us the history of how we got here, and how many times this has gone to who, and how many times it's come to us, and just a basic overview?
I can't vote for this.
Okay, so on the vision and the guiding principles, right, there was a lot of community.
Nothing about economics at all.
Did you get it?
All right, can you control yourself?
Kim's got the floor, please.
Okay, so there was a lot of, there was a lot of work with our community. There was a lot of, two different, I think, Planning Commission, we went over it word by word. We did the same at the board, right? We put it up in front of an audience, went through word by word, and made a correction. And at that, at that hearing, the board was decided that that is the, that is the vision statement that they wanted to adopt. So that, you know, that is what we brought back to you.
You say, who did this?
So the board, so the board, so your board decided the last time we were there, they said, next, we're not gonna make more changes. Next time we come back, we're just going to adopt it. Of course, that doesn't mean that you can't, but I think that we could, we could probably go over it right now. So we did want to be able to leave, hopefully, with a, with a vision.
So we, so we saw this, and we said, that's it, we don't want to make any more changes. Make those changes and bring it back, correct?
Those were your changes.
So these are the changes that this board made already. So I'm happy to go through it some more, whatever Supervisor Parks wants to do. I just don't want to stick that on the CEO to do another vision statement.
And this recommendation number one.
I would just say, part of it is that it has been created by thirty-five people, putting all these words in it. And if you had one person say, can you sit down and just like, put this out into sentences that are clear and not redundant, and, you know, we've got the best beaches in the world, but we only have fertile agriculture land, and we've got soil slash lands. This is a, this is a, it could be considered an important thing in terms of, this is a vision you want to put out there, you want to put it on some of your material that you, you know.
But you're right. First of all, a vision statement, of any vision, should be short, concise, and tell something. Here, we're just throwing a bunch of stuff out there.
Vibrant, healthy, safe stewardship. It's just got all the words you like, but what is it saying?
But it doesn't really say anything.
No, it doesn't.
I'm hearing staff say they would like us to have this today as you walk out of here. So does anybody, so, so, I mean, if we don't like this, we should create the new one, we should.
Well, creating a vision statement can take weeks and months to do that.
That's what I'm just saying, if one person could just work on it in the CEO's office, look at it.
I'm sorry, we approved it in concept initially, now.
Yeah, we already did once.
And now we just approve it.
If you want to go back to the drawing board, but that, you're right, that could take months and months. I mean, you give it to one person, you're gonna have everybody go, well, no, that's not quite what I'm looking for.
That's one of the items, I'm sure.
I definitely honor and respect the point that this is a very long vision statement and so forth, but I also have to respect all the people's points of views and concepts that went into this.
It does have a good third.
What does that have to do with anything?
I just, I would, I would accept what we have currently and, and keep going, because I think we have a lot of good work here that needs to be done. But I wouldn't object if the CEO's office looked at it and provided a suggestion, if that was the case. I just don't want to slow things down because of this.
Can I offer this as a suggestion?
This is gonna be something that's gonna be around for twenty years.
Supervisor Foyd, can I offer this? I think I got a great solution, right? And that is, look, this came to us once. We said conceptually, we like this, and we didn't want to spend forever on the vision, right? But I think the way to do this is, if everybody goes, this basic concept is right, but we don't, it's too long, it's not gonna read well, all that other stuff, then I suggest we adopt this with the proviso, that anybody who writes this, writes it better, bring it back to us. Let Supervisor Parks write it better if she thinks it needs to be done. Bring it back. I'm completely open to a shorter, better one, but I don't feel it's fair to stick that onto the CEO's office or even planning after all of this time. So I would say, we conceptually adopt this, and we leave the door open for the next two or three board meetings, for Supervisor Parks write it better.
You do have professionals and people in marketing that will just, and even English teachers, you know, nothing personal.
Then find them, have them do it.
Why not, why not have just something clean and simple, and that makes a statement, and you look away from it, saying, now, what did it just say?
You're never gonna remember that. Remember, you have to have something short enough, and it, it just mostly gets you to your own memory. This you're never gonna do.
Right.
So, but all the concepts are in there, and so then somebody can take, based on this, and rewrite something on this part. But I guess what Maggie was saying too, is all the concepts are in there, we just don't say, this is going to be it. But all the concepts, I think, Kim, you were looking for, is in there, right? And then we can come back and rewrite that.
They can proceed with this.
They can proceed with this.
Until we come up with, and, you know, you could put it on me, but I'd rather put it on, I see.
You know, I'd rather work with a bunch of professionals who really do this, so that people could, people walk out there and go, yeah, that's a county I live in, I get excited about it. That's really would be the ideal. But these are all the ideas that have already been brought together, so you don't have to start with that.
As long as we can go forward with this, and staff can go forward.
But knowing this is not gonna be the final.
Because I, because I, if you want something that people can remember, do the first sentence. Ventura County will remain a remarkable place to live, work, and play.
Yeah.
Okay? That's, you could do that. It doesn't capture all, then you're gonna have, you gotta say something about this and that.
But you can say a lot of that with one or two words. Don't, you know, you have to get into soil, or this, or that kind of stuff.
Mr. Chair, you got a first and a second.
Okay, we got a first and a second? Good.
Wait, 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 I just, I just wonder, Kim, do you think it could be written more succinctly, better?
You better say yes.
So thanks for that, Commissioner Duquesne. You know, I, I.
Oh, yes.
Two things about this.
Oh, yes, because I already asked you this question. Has your answer changed since the last time I asked you?
It could be, but then, you know, I also feel a little bit bad for everybody that sat in the room and contributed and watched the live editing and got their word in there, and then heard the message from the board, that that was kind of it. So I do feel a little, but, so if you agendize it and you want to talk about it again, and maybe people will come up to, to talk about it. But, you know, a vision statement is different than a mission statement, right? It's the grand vision from the county. So I'm not seeing, you know, it being a paragraph is that much heartburn for us. It's, you know, there's a lot of things that are in our vision, but, you know.
Going back to what Linda said, sometimes you say remarkable place to live, then you say, oh, the mountains, because of the soil. Do you really have to say it when you're really saying it's a remarkable place to live? And everybody has some piece of it, they see in their own mind as remarkable. I'm not sure you have to detail all the little pieces.
I'm happy to open, I'm happy to be open to an improvement, but I think we ought to respect the process up to this point in time. Tell staff this captures that. Let somebody, anybody can come up with this, but you do have to, I mean, this Planning Commission adopted this vision statement.
The Board of Supervisors.
The Board of Supervisors saw it once and, and said.
We've all put our, our words in there, you know, the Board of Supervisors contributed soils slash lands, which is really not something that one would put into that. But what we could do is, if we take no action, it has already been conceptually approved, and we can ask, you know, direct our CEO staff to be able to come up, if they can come up with something a little more succinct and more to the point that it's something that people will read and remember.
I think that the way that happens, and I, again, I just think it's unfair to staff after we told them, no more, don't spend more time on this vision statement. We specifically said that, that we should do this. Just a slight difference in that is that we adopt this, and we leave an open invitation for anybody here to write it better. Anybody that wants to do that.
I think, Mr. Chair, I think we need to move forward.
All right, what do we, do we make the motion already? Have we made a motion in a second?
Yeah, second, I second.
Okay, here we go.
So the motion is, what?
To adopt this and leave an open invitation to Supervisor Parks or anybody else to write it better and bring that, bring a better one back, right? And we'll consider that. My guess is it'll have to go to the Planning Commission, and then it'll have to, you know.
See, that, that is, to me, a ridiculous, you know, it goes right back into the same situation.
Lori, can we vote?
All we're asking is for some cleaner language and making it more succinct.
I don't know, is there a regular vote?
That shouldn't have to go through.
When you say, all we're asking, it's, if it was so easy, you'd have everybody stepping up to do that. It's not easy to consolidate that, and, you know.
I think that's where we had it come to.
I think everybody in this room could do that.
Let me ask before we do that.
Well, if everybody in the room can do it, do it.
At six, at six-thirty at night.
Do it anytime you want. Do it next week. If you sit, it's easy and everybody can do it, but I think it's time for.
Okay, okay.
Then you want to take it back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, sir?
My guess is something.
Steve, real quick.
I have a procedural question.
Procedure question, go.
From the perspective of the Planning Commission. The Staff Recommendation is listed one through eight, and your comments are appropriate for us to, as a Planning Commission, if we're gonna sign off on this, approve two through eight. We've heard a lot of input, obviously, and staff, direction given to staff. I think you've accomplished that. Do we need a, we need a separate vote from the Planning Commission on items two through eight?
Thanks for asking. It's up to your commission.
I was gonna move adoption to staff recommendation three hours ago.
So I guess we need.
I just moved adoption, staff recommendation.
Hang on, we got a comment here?
I have, I would like to comment on that motion. I think that the board is very involved in this process, and they have, it sounds like they're very close to approving a motion to direct staff to do some changes to this. And I agree with, with the essence of that vote, and I don't think we should be making a different recommendation to the county staff. I think instead, we should wait for them to make their vote, and then vote to approve that or disapprove that.
Well, technically, you're right. I agree with you. But they have the last word anyway.
Right, yeah, yeah. The Planning Commission's job is to advise the board, and so if you have a generic motion, which it sounds like you're inclined to make, to support.
I'm not inclined, I did.
You did. Then, then the board will do what they're gonna do.
But we'd go on this one first?
We have to be a second.
So, so.
Well, there's a, there's a motion on the.
Yeah, there's a separate motion on the table regarding.
From the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, for the board.
Okay, so we have, so we're, she said vote. Okay. We're voting to approve. Everybody agree?
I would rather hear from the Planning Commission first, before we vote. I mean, that's the whole point.
I'm sorry, this is, this is just for the vision statement, and that's just the board.
Just for the vision.
Okay, this, this is the vision statement, it's the only one we're doing, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we voted on this, now the Planning Commission. Who are you missing?
Did I vote?
We're approving the guiding principles also.
That's the only item we're doing.
Who are you missing?
Guiding principles, that we're adopting a guiding principles.
I thought we were just doing the vision statement, which one?
We're doing the vision statement and the guiding principles.
The vision and.
Together, okay, you're good?
Yeah, that's.
Linda, you gonna vote?
We're, we're approving the item number one, and then are we adding to that? And if someone comes up with something cleaner and more succinct, we will consider that.
Yes.
Good? Okay, so now the Planning Commission is gonna do something.
Are we done with the vote?
That's done.
Now I can move on.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Onstott to accept recommend staff actions two through eight, and I have a second from Commissioner Kessley.
And so, whoa.
Wait. I don't understand the motion, because it says, provide input and direction. Did we, are we done?
We've done that, the last three hours.
Okay.
But, the input and the direction are the comments made by the Planning Commissioners when they made their comments. Thank you. So it's approved, staff's recommendation was your comments.
And Robert Riggins.
Yes.
Commissioner Kessley?
Before you get a name out, she says yes.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Moved by Commissioner Onstott, seconded by Commissioner Kessley. The vote is unanimous. Five is in.
Okay.
Two through eight.
So now what's our next motion? We're done?
I think Ben has already made the suggestions.
All, those other suggestions in the two through eight, right? And Kim interrupted us because of the item sixteen, but we now have agreed to instead do it with the guiding principles, so we don't have to worry about that. So I think that the comments captured the essence of the question about doing, doing the projected growth number and that kind of stuff. So staff clear in terms of the stuff that you heard of consensus from the board on?
And you know, Lori, what the motion is? Okay.
And I would just.
Well, we're done, we're good?
So, I'll clarify one thing, because I'm not sure this has been clarified, and that is that staff is asking directions about whether we open up the area plans, and my comment was, let's get the development potential first before we do that, but staff will come back and give us a report on El Rio. But conceptually, right now, we're not saying, do go to the El Rio plan, so we're gonna avoid area plans still, get the general plan done first, except there may be an exception on El Rio.
And it's not continued.
So Supervisor Bennett, I want to be really clear on the area plans, because they're, it seems to go back and forth. It looks like we've had a consistent message all along, saying, we were going to reformat them, we're going to make them consistent with the general plan. So if the general plan adopts policies that are contrary to the policies in an area plan, we will be needing to amend those area plans to make those policies consistent. So whether we're going to not dive in and do any sort of rezoning because we don't need to, that's one issue, right? But the policy issue to make them consistency, that will be another issue. So when we go to reformat and look, and look at the area plans for consistency, we will be looking at that, right? So I wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion.
Yeah, I think from the beginning, we said we wanted to make the area plans consistent with the general plan. We just didn't want to open up the area plan for a full-blown, what are we gonna do? We make them consistent with that, and we should be aware of where are, there is an inconsistency if we have a policy that's gonna do that, right? Okay.
Okay, so do we have anything else we have to do? Are we, are we done with that? Everybody understands there's no more motions to make? Mr. Barnes, no?
Do we need that to be a motion?
We need anything else?
I think we need a general, we need a general motion on these directions, don't we?
We do? Okay.
So I'll make that motion, that long motion to adopt the.
And Lori remembers everything she's putting in there is perfect.
This motion is to adopt the.
Everything was said, the last three hours.
Adopt the modifications that Ms. Pearlheart has reached an understanding on, and to come back with us if there's, if there's a lack of clarity.
Matt, don't go away, because we're all gonna stand up after and take a big picture up here, so you're gonna come down and take a picture first.
Could we, could we schedule the general plan for every afternoon?
That is perfect. Lori's gotta bring in dinner now, from now on, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
I would just ask that, as I look at doing this alternative report, there is so much you have on your plate right now. The idea of throwing in more things that you want to look at alternatives for, the, you know, I would just say, try to keep it to